Good morning, ladies and gentlemen. Thank you all for being here and thank you all that are listening to us live stream here. Today is a regular meeting of the Commissioners Court of Hood County, Texas, that I'm calling the Quarter, on September the 8th, 2020. We're in the Central jury room of Hood County, the Justice Center at 1200 West Pearl Street in Granbury, Texas. Today, as we do every second and fourth Tuesday, Dr. Bill Miller of the Hood County Pastor Council had always arranged for us to have a Good speaker to give us the invocation, and we are proud today to have Father Stuart Smith of Good Shepherd Anglican Church to give us the invocation. Father Smith.
Let us pray. Heavenly Father, source of all power and wisdom and insight, giver of every good and perfect gift, we thank you for the members of this court and the judge, for the sacrifice of their time and effort, for their willingness to stand in a place that sometimes has criticism and debate. We thank you for the commitment their family makes. Lord, we pray that you would pour out upon them wisdom, know that they want to do what's the very best for all the citizens of this county. Give them insight in the particular issues they discuss this day. Deliver them from anxiety, frustration, and boredom. Give them a high sense of their duty. Reward them with the comfort and joy of the Holy Spirit. Bless all the citizens of this county. Make us respectful to rightful authority and supportive of those who by your power and in your name conduct the business of this county. All this we ask through Jesus, our Lord and Savior. Amen.
Amen. Now would everybody join me in to pledge allegiance?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Pledge allegiance to Texas.
I am the Texas flag. I pledge allegiance to the state of Texas, one state under God, one and indivisible.
It is my honor here today to do something, since we don't have any special presentations, we had a whole bunch last week, but we have two new members to the family of the Hood County employees that I'm proud to introduce right now. The first one, and I'd like for you to stand up, please, is Michelle Carew, who's our new Elections Administrator, right here. This is Michelle. So, welcome, Michelle. Let me tell you a little bit about Michelle. Michelle comes from Aransas County, which is Rockport, and the home newspaper there had a big front page article about Michelle leaving. She was there for 11 years, is that correct?
No, it was seven years.
Seven years. Seven years, 7/11, whatever. Okay. So, anyway, and the article mentioned that she was coming to Hood County, Texas. Well, I want you to know I have a lot of good friends that live in Rockport and have homes there, and they called me up and gave me a good what-for. So, they said the next time I come to Rockport, they will be tarring and feathering me for taking away their beloved Elections Administrator. So, I know we did a good thing by hiring her. And another thing, she is President of the Texas Association of Elections Administrator. That's a pretty good statement right there. And she was also elected Secretary, then Treasurer, Vice President, and now she's President. So, welcome, and if anybody gives you any trouble, I'll turn you over to Sheriff Deeds, and he'll take care of you down here. No, welcome, I really do mean that. Thank you. And I also have another new member here of our family of county employees, and everybody has really liked her and taken liking to her, and we've given her already two weeks, and she's passed with fine colors, and that's Shannon Kaiser. Shannon. Shannon is the new boss of all of us that are sitting up here. She's the Administrative Assistant to the Commissioners Court, and she is in Annex One, and she is working hard. She's been everything that you can imagine and has been in the public, and you were our Legal Secretary at one time, weren't you? We won't hold that against you, but that's, we appreciate if you can deal with a bunch of lawyers, you can certainly deal with a bunch of real gentlemen here. So, we look forward to having you for a long time also. So, welcome, welcome, okay? Okay, the next thing I'd like to remind anybody is that if anybody would like to speak to any item on the agenda, Sheriff Deeds in the back row there has some public participation forms that you can fill out. Hand them back to the sheriff. The sheriff will give them to our county clerk, Katie Lang, and then she will give them to me, and at the proper time, we'll ask you to speak for maybe no more than two or three minutes, depending. The next item is the Consent Agenda. Does any Commissioner wish to pull anything from the Consent Agenda? If not, do I hear an appropriate motion?
Motion to approve the Consent Agenda.
Motion's been made by Commissioner Dever to approve the Consent Agenda, second.
Second.
Second by Commissioner White. Any further discussion? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
All opposed? Motion carries five zero. Okay. That brings us down here. No road operations today, though we don't get to see our friend, Mr. Don Lenny, but we do have something in development, Mr. Clint Head.
Morning, Judge. Morning, Commissioners. Today we have a final plat of Diamondback Meadows lots 1 through 5. It's a subdividing of a 20-acre tract out of the John K. Gowl survey abstract number 201, Hood County, Texas. This final lot, this final plat will create five lots of record. The largest lot will be 5.264 acres, and the smallest will be 3 acres.
Smallest is what?
3 acres.
Okay.
The property is located on the north side of Richter Court and Toler. The property is located in Road Corridor District in Precinct 1 in the western part of the county and will be served by well and onsite sewage facilities. Staff has reviewed this final plat and recommends approval as presented.
Do I hear any motion?
Uh, Judge, I'd like to make a motion to approve the Diamondback Meadows Final Plat, Precinct 1.
Motion been made by Commissioner Dever to approve the Diamondback Meadows Final Plat. Do I hear a second?
Second.
Second by Commissioner Cotton. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
All opposed? Motion carries five zero. Thank you, Mr. Head. Okay, financial, Ms. Becky Kidd.
Good morning, Judge, Commissioners. For this court, your expenditures are $2,780,937. You've also been given a list of expenditures over $10,000. There any questions on anything? We have reviewed all these invoices and do recommend payment.
It's so high because we had to pay the Crescent?
We paid Crescent, we paid early on, we paid down on the library, we paid Hood County, I'm sorry, Hood Central appraisal fees. We prepay some of these as they're due October 1st. We want to be assured that they get in place and we're not charged any penalty, so we always pay everything that's due on October 1st in either this court or the next court.
That's a good idea. Do I hear a motion?
Motion to pay the bills.
Okay. Motion's been made by Commissioner Dever to pay the bills through September the 2nd of 2020 in the amount of $2,780,937, second by Commissioner Eagle. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
All opposed? Motion carries five zero.
Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Kidd. All right, under miscellaneous, discuss and take appropriate action regarding the deferment of certain employees' 6.2% Social Security tax during September 1, 2020 through December 31, 2020, and repayment January 1, 2021 through April 30, 2021. Ms. Leann Belkoy, explain that to us.
Well, we all know that the President had put out for us to defer the taxes, and I like to kind of think of it, it's a loan. As of right now, we will have to pay it back. So, it's not mandatory that we do this, but I am recommending that we do not.
You know, Judge, I spoke with the Treasurer about this, and I'm in agreement that we don't do this, because I mean, people are going to have to pay it back, and then, you know, if possible, and, you know, January, February, March, and first part of next year, you're going to be paying double. So, I mean, I just don't think it's necessary.
Yeah, unfortunately, when you have to start paying back in January, you are now paying 12.4% out of your paycheck, so, and then, of course, we would have to match that also. So, I don't think it would be good for the employee, and I do not think it would be good for the county.
Is it the employees that have the option to do it, or us has the option to do it?
I think for us, if the court says that we're not going to do it...
That's the way I understood it, yeah.
Yes.
Okay.
And I think, and that's why I want to bring it to court, because I think it should be across the board.
Yeah.
And I think it would be really hard to do one employee, not another employee, and then when your employee leaves, you still have to go back and pay them.
Yeah, yeah. I agree with Commissioner White. I think it's, you know, it's not a good idea for their employees, or for us.
I honestly don't think it is a good idea for any employee.
Yeah.
Because you're set up for failure, because you think, now you have this money, but don't forget, you have to repay it back.
Yep. I agree.
Okay, any further discussion? Okay, do I hear an appropriate motion?
Yeah, Judge, I'll make a motion to deny the deferment of employees' 6.2% Social Security tax during September 20th through, September 1, 2020 through December 31, 2020, and repayment January 1, 2021 through April 30, 2021.
Motion made by Commissioner White to deny the deferment of the Social Security tax, second by Commissioner Dever. Any further discussion? All those in favor of denying the deferment, say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed? Motion carries five zero. It's denied. Okay, you're up again, aren't you?
Yes. I'm going to have to talk to Alicia, because I don't like being first and second. I'm just kidding.
We can give you a couple more items if you'd like.
No, no. So, we have a check...
I tell you what, Leann loves to come up here and talk in public, and we're getting her used to it.
I'm sure you'll can see me sweating.
She loves it. Okay. Discuss and take appropriate action regarding Texas Comptroller Check for $33,974 for unclaimed property.
So, basically, we received this last year also in a larger amount. Last year, we did put it in Fund 10 miscellaneous revenue. The Auditor and I were talking, she would recommend maybe it go into capital projects, the Fund 55. So, I don't know if you guys want to discuss that with the Auditor on where we need to place it?
But it's a deposit, right?
Yes.
And you know Hood County does not turn down any money that's coming down from somebody, so it will get deposited somewhere.
Yes, we just need to figure out where you want to allot it to.
So, Ms. Kidd and you were talking about it. Ms. Kidd, you recommend putting it in capital projects?
Yes, sir, that's where it will do the most good.
Okay. Anybody want to discuss the appropriateness of where the money should go? We know we're going to deposit it, it's just where it should go.
Judge, I'll make the motion to deposit the check for $33,974 for unclaimed property into the capital fund.
Second. Okay. Motion's been made by Commissioner Cotton to deposit the Texas Comptroller Check for unclaimed property, amount of $33,974 in capital projects, second by Commissioner Eagle. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed? Motion carries five zero. You got anything else, Ms. Belkoy?
No, thank you so much.
All right, okay. All right. Item number three, discuss and take appropriate action regarding depositing 5% to 7% of the general fund property tax collection into capital projects for future building and/or equipment projects. Ms. Kidd.
Good morning again. I've spoken with some other Auditors after I, Mr. Eagle brought up a good point. We have reserves in fund balance of 18 million, and that can be used for buying equipment instead of sitting there, that can be used instead of borrowing money. I used to think that we needed to keep debt. I'm going away from that. I'm thinking that this is a good plan for this county, to provide money to buy patrol cars and refurbished fire trucks instead of borrowing this money. And I think in the long run, you will save hundreds of thousands of dollars in interest if you move in a direction to continue to put money into capital projects for future building projects or equipment that you need.
Becky, do you have a certain amount of this 18 million that you're going to try to...
Well, we'll discuss that during budget time, when we have, but as, because you've asked, I would like to see 2.4 million used from fund balance to fund projects that we need to do, and not borrow money. We have two fire trucks that we need to get refurbished, that's about 700,000, patrol cars, and the big one would be if we moved Tyler, that's going to be quite expensive. And I recommend that we use some of the reserves that we have to fund that. I've talked with some other Auditors, they have, their plan, some of them have no debt. They, they keep a reserve on hand, if they have to buy something or build something, they have the money. And I'd like us to move in that direction, and this is a start. This would start October 1st.
Well, this keep you from borrowing money next year.
At least this year, for sure.
For one year?
At least for fiscal year 2021, for sure.
This will not give us a black eye on our reserves, because I know when I was on the school board, they always preached have six months of operating budget.
Yes, sir, and I...
That will not give us a, of course, the Auditors, outside Auditors always recommend to have six months, they always do that. So, that's not going to give us a black eye with the Auditors, right?
No, sir. We will be fine, and this is a good use of that money, and I appreciate Commissioner Eagle's bringing this to our attention. I was able to talk to other long-term Auditors, and they agreed that this is what they do, and this is just healthy financial planning.
Okay.
Commissioner Dever, actually, in the school situation, their recommendation is 90, three months as a reserve, because...
But when I was on the board, it was six months.
I'm sorry?
When I was on the school board, it was six months.
Well, I spoke with Dr. Glenn about that, and he said that they're strictly, they're supposed to stay within a three-month margin on the, on the fund balance, but be that as it may, the only problem I've got with this right now is we haven't set a rate and we haven't set a budget yet. Are, are we not putting the cart a little bit before the horse here?
No, sir, I have the budget prepared. It will be hand-delivered today or tomorrow.
Well, but, I mean, we haven't seen it yet.
No, sir, but in order to get, and if you want to wait until you have, and this start October 1st, I don't have a problem in the world with that. I'm just trying to get this on the agenda, on your, put on your thinking caps, and see if this is something that you agree with. I think it's a good plan for this county. I'd like for us to be debt-free at some point.
Well, and I, and I agree to an extent, but having a little bit of a debt is not a, really a financial, it's not financially unsound to carry a small amount of debt.
No, sir, it's not, but we are looking at maybe a jail expansion in three to five years, and this is planning for that also. You will have reserves so that you don't have to borrow as much money, thereby saying that, saving the taxpayers the interest on that. So, that's what I'm trying to put in place now for the future of this county, way down the road.
So, my, my take on it today would be that we don't do this today, we wait till we get to see your budget, and that we've had a chance to look at that before we set aside a percentage, because we don't know what the percentage is of what. And, and I do like the idea of, if we do something like this, to come up with a sum certain, you've indicated 2.4 million, I would like, from this seat in the bench, I'd like to see us come up with a number to put in there.
Preliminary number is about 1 million a year, with what I have projected right now. 2.4 million is pulling from prior year, pulling right out of your fund balance, but moving forward, you put money in every time you get a check from the appraisal district, 5% to 7% into Fund, into Fund 55, and that's going to be about a million dollars that you can put in there.
Have we, has the Commissioners Court ever done this before?
No, sir.
So, again, I, okay, well, I've said my piece, so thank you.
So, the 2.4 would go into Fund 55, Becky?
That would go in there as a part of the budget for fiscal year 2021. These are two separate subjects entirely.
Okay. But this would only be used for capital projects?
Yes, sir. Any building, any future projects, you're, you're collecting your reserves for future planning. And again, I've talked with other longtime Auditors, and this is exactly what they do.
Any other Commissioner, or anybody have any other discussion they'd like to make regarding use of the general fund property tax collection? Do you want to vote on it now, or do you want to wait until we get the budget?
Judge, I would prefer to wait till we get the budget.
You prepare to wait till you get the budget? Okay, and Becky, you don't mind saying just pulling this off until the next time?
Not at all. Not at all.
Okay. Well, I think that since two of the Members would, I don't really have any problem with it either, pulling off weight to that.
You know, I think if it's just a matter of when we do it, how we do it, in the next budget, this budget, I don't think that's a big deal, is it? I mean, you can do it at the budget process to do this, can't we?
Yes, sir.
Yeah. So...
We're going to do that on the 15th, aren't we?
Yes, sir.
Well, we could, can we approve it then on the 15th?
Absolutely.
Okay.
Judge, I'd like to make a motion to pull this off the agenda and, and put it back on probably during the budget session.
Okay. Motion's been made by Commissioner Dever to pull item three, the 5% to 7% of the general property tax fund to the General Budget Meeting on September the 15th.
That's fine.
Do I have a second, Judge?
I'll second that.
Second by Commissioner Eagle. Any further discussion? All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed? Motion carries five to zero. Do we wait and put it back on for September the 15th? Ms. Kidd.
Thank you.
Thank you very much. Okay. Item number four, consider and take appropriate action to move forward on repairs on the interior and roof of the Hood County YMCA.
Good morning.
And we have Ms. Melissa Welborn here. Ms. Welborn?
Yes.
Good morning.
Back in June, I received a, an estimate on repairs to the YMCA roof from a local roofing company. That was the first I had heard of an issue with the YMCA roof, so I immediately contacted TAC, and they sent an appraiser and an engineer to take a look at the roof. And I sent you the actual appraisal from TAC, and also the report from the engineer. You should have received that in your packet. When I spoke to my rep at TAC, he explained that the only thing really damaged on the roof was the tin area of the roof, and it's mainly cosmetic, it's not going to leak. However, we do have a clause in our policy that allows us to repair that, because it is cosmetic. And I can't do anything without the court's approval, plus I've also get to contact the YMCA and let them know, because they're responsible for the deduct, the deductible of 5,000.
Have you been able to get ahold of the YMCA? I mean, have they...
In the beginning, I spoke to the YMCA rep about three times, and he received a copy of the appraisers' report, and I've not been able to reach him since. I've emailed him twice and called and left three voicemails, and he's not responding, because I wanted to know what their take was on this, because again, they are responsible for the $5,000 deductible, but he's not responding.
Court, the, Melissa sent this contract to me to review, and if you, on page 17 of the contract, about middle way, it says that the lessie is to reimburse the county for any insurance deductible. And so, my, my take on it was, we just do the job and then send them a bill for the $5,000. I think that that contract, and Mr. Mills may, this may want to add to this, I don't know. Have you had a chance to look at this, Matt?
Actually, Vanessa from where I'm from...
Yeah, I have...
Oh, that's right, I'm sorry, Vanessa, I'm sorry, you looked at it.
I did, and I...
You want to come forward, Vanessa, so everybody can hear you.
Yeah, we need to get you on the mic.
And on the camera.
I have looked at it, and I'm in agreement with Melissa said, the contract, Dave looked at it, it says that if they're not going to take care of it within like a 30-day period, we've got a letter, we've sent them, that at the end of 30 days, they haven't done anything, then we can go ahead, take action, fix it, and then basically send them the bill for the deductible. And the, the real problem is, it's cosmetic damage, but they have those huge sheets of metal on there, and if we were to change from TAC to another insurance company, then they might not cover that. They might say, well, you know, you say it's cosmetic damage, but maybe it wasn't cosmetic damage, and it would just cause a huge problem, I think, in the future.
It could, yes.
And on, and on, just to add to this, on the, on a roof situation like we've got, we've got insurance that's going to cover this, and they're calling it cosmetic, but I, I don't want it to come back and bite us in three years or five years, because it turns into something else at those locations, because they've, I'm sure they've gone up there and marked every dent on the roof that's, that's been affected, and, and I feel like we should go ahead and take advantage of the policy, replace those cosmetic parts, and then just send the deductible to the, to the Y, just like they're supposed to pay.
I agree. Did you all get a picture, or did you see the damage? I brought a copy, if you guys wanted to look at it.
They should have received a copy of both reports. Oh, okay, okay.
Do you want to look at it? I can just pass it down there.
I've already, I looked at it, so, thank you.
May I have my new card?
Okay. I believe the report states that it's about 100 dings per 10 by 10 area, so again, it's evidently damaged between the hailstorm we had last October, and then there was one that went through there end of May of this year.
I think, I think we need to protect our property, you know, and that way there's no issue in the future.
Well, I'd just hate to see the YMCA going breach, you know, going to breach on the contract, too. That wouldn't be good for them, would it?
Well, the, the building does belong to the county, so it's definitely up to the court on which direction we move.
Okay, any further discussion?
I'd, I'd support that, Judge. We'd be, we'd be liable if, if we didn't take care of it now, and then later, insurance is changed, they won't insure that roof, so then we'd really be liable, so, yeah, I have support for that.
I agree. Do I hear an appropriate motion?
Yes, Your Honor, I'm, I'm going to move that, make a motion that we move forward with the repairs to the interior and roof of the Hood County YMCA as scheduled, and the $5,000 deductible, we will bill to the YMCA when we're completed the job.
Motion's been made by Commissioner Eagle to move forward with the repairs on the interior and roof of the building that houses the YMCA on schedule, and that after it's completed, just bill the $5,000 deductible to the YMCA. Do I hear a second? Second by Commissioner White. Any further discussion? All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed? Motion carries five zero. Thank you very much, Melissa and Vanessa. Okay, item number five, consider and take appropriate action to authorize the county judge to sign the following interlocal agreements for Hood County animal control, and then there are six cities that we have, Hood County has a interlocal agreement with, is that correct? Sheriff Crescent, Decortova, Lepin, Stockton, Ben, Toler, and Granbury.
That is correct. Nothing is changing this year from last year, the year that we're in, so we're just trying to be on top of everything. Next year, we might need to go up, but for this year, it's exactly the same as it was last year. If you want me to read off the, the, all that information...
I think, I think we have them, it varies from $100 annually to $1,000 annually for different cities.
And the city of Granbury is more than that, so, anyway, I, so I just come before you to ask that you re-up these for the next coming year.
This is something we've done a few times, that I've been on the court and...
Yeah, it's, it's been an ongoing deal for quite a few years now, just as the cities want to have agreements with us, and the city of... to have agreements with us, and the city of Granbury, I believe, was the first one. And then it's kind of went from there over the years.
Good idea to do it. And we can still do it for that reasonable cost.
Sergeant McNabb keeps up with the statistics of how many times they go out to the different cities. So didn't want to take up your time with that, but we've got that information available anytime you request it.
When we first started doing this, Sergeant McNabb had the records of the pickups and the carrying of the dogs, cats, or whatever. And that's kind of what we've, how we got our numbers for each city, Crescent, DeCortova, Lipan, Stockton, Ben, Toler, and Granbury. So she did a good job sorting it out and figuring what we needed to reimburse us on this.
It's a good deal for all the cities from what I can tell.
Yes, it is, so.
It's not that expensive for them either.
Sergeant McNabb couldn't be here today because she was, they're doing a low-cost vaccination clinic today, so.
Good.
Good news to Sergeant McNabb. She does a good job over her.
She does. They've been extremely busy. They had a lot of dog bites over the weekend, too.
Yeah. I know when I have an issue from a constituent, I call her, and she takes care of it.
Recognized by a national organization, too, for her good work, so y'all all have. So I do hear appropriate motion.
Judge, I'd like to make a motion, consider and take appropriate action to allow the county judge to sign the following interlocal agreements for Hood County Animal Control, City Crescent, City DeCortova, City Lipan, City of Stockton Ben, City of Toler, City of Granbury.
Second. A motion been made by Commissioner Dever to allow the, or authorize the county judge to sign the interlocal agreements for Hood County Animal Control with the city of Crescent, DeCortova, Lipan, Stockton Ben, Toler, and Granbury. Second by Commissioner Eagle. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
All opposed? Motion carries 5 to 0. Thank you, Sheriff.
Yeah, and Sergeant McNabb will be getting with each of these cities so we can get it signed on behalf of the cities, so we can get them back to the county clerk to sign, so.
Okay, great deal. She does a great job. Okay, item number six, authorize the county judge to sign the savings maintenance grant contract. Ms. Kidd?
Judge, this is something that we do every year. This is a program to give information to a victim of a crime when someone is getting released from jail. It is something we've been working with for a long time. It used to be called the Victim Information Notification Every Day, or the VINE Act. Now, this is the State Automated Victim Notification System or Service. And it doesn't cost us anything. It's a pass-through grant, and I recommend that you sign it.
Okay.
I get that right.
Sheriff?
That right. Unfortunately, we deal with a lot of domestic violence issues, so when we do, and it's labeled as domestic violence, not just a regular old assault, then the victims are notified when that person bonds out of jail. So, and this is all part of that system, so we need to keep it going. It's a good deal.
And it doesn't cost the county anything?
No, sir.
Okay. All right.
I'll make the motion.
Motion.
Yeah, I'll make the motion to authorize the county judge to sign the savings maintenance grant contract.
Yeah, I'll second that.
By Commissioner Cotton to authorize the county judge to sign the savings maintenance grant contract. Second by Commissioner Eagle. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
All opposed? Motion carries 5 to 0. Okay, item number seven, discuss and take appropriate action to authorize the county judge to sign rental of equipment agreement with election system and software. Michelle Carew.
Good morning.
Good morning again. All right, tell us what you got here.
Well, it's my understanding that on all large elections, Hood County goes out and rents additional equipment to help with the lines, or whatever the case might be. So this is actually for 45 pieces of equipment plus installation. The quote that I received shows that the cost would be $37,125.
I wanted, Judge, I got a question on this. I know emergency manager officer's not here, but since the election, the governor's opened up the voting for another week or two, right? Could we get some money from carriers from that, reckon?
You can.
Yes.
Very good.
Your topic.
They are the current vendor that we already have our equipment with, so it's...
Yes, this is what we've got.
We've got to have the election machines, and then we'll try to get them, get the money back to pay for everything, too. But we've been doing it in the past. Isn't that your understanding, too, Melissa? Okay. So we've been doing it. So this is just a safeguard and doing it, so.
That's right.
Thank you. Thank you for what you're doing here. Okay, do I hear an appropriate motion?
Yeah, I'll make that motion, Your Honor, to make a motion that we authorized you to sign the rental of equipment agreement with ESS, our election systems and software company, for this election.
Second. Okay. Motion been made by Commissioner Cotton to authorize the county judge, I mean, excuse me, Commissioner Eagle. I know that. I'm just getting carried away. I'm in the mood of the thing. Look at Fay up there shaking her head. That's the first mistake I've made in 10 years. Motion been made by Commissioner Eagle to allow, authorize the county judge to sign the rental of equipment agreement with election systems and software. Second by Commissioner Dever. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
All opposed? Motion carries 5 to 0.
Thank you.
Thank you, Michelle. Okay, next. Item eight, approved request of sheriff's office to donate to Texas EMS, a 501(c)(3) charitable organization, not-for-profit company, a total of 12 of the old tough books slated for disposal or salvage per the Local Government Code 263.152A47 that serves a public purpose. Nilda?
Good morning, Commissioners and Judge. Actually, there is a typo on that. It's not A47, it's A4B, and that is my error, and I apologize. In the Local Government Code Book, it says that the Commissioners Court may dispose of the property by donating it to a civic or charitable organization located in the county if the Commissioners Court decides that B, the donation serves a public purpose. And that is what this is. Texas CMA has approached us. They want 12 of the tough books that we are getting rid of that are old, and we would have to put them in auction or whatever. And they've requested 12 of them. They have some kind of purpose that they can use them. And Roger may be able to explain that in further detail. I'm not sure.
Sheriff?
What they need them for is just like what we've used them for in the past, is to run, operate the county's CAD system so they can keep up on calls and what's going on as calls come in before the EMS calls. The reason they're not usable for us is because the old ones couldn't be updated to Windows 10 without messing up the GPS and some other different things that we have. But the ambulance uses different GPS systems, so we feel that they would probably work for their future. And it's going to be a big expense for them, and they definitely serve a public purpose and respond to all the medical calls in the county, except initially in Pecan. So our lives depend on them getting the right information and getting there. So I'm all for helping them if we can find a legal way to do it. And apparently, this is the legal way we can accomplish that. So they've requested 12, and I'm all for it if you approve this.
In your package, you should have received their 501(c)(3) certificates to verify that they are eligible for this, so.
The county's not out any money anyway. They were going to salvage them anyway.
No.
You can't get anything for those.
You can't. In fact, I inquired with Laura, my inventory person, this morning. I said, have we ever sold any before? And she said, a few, but not many. And I said, how much did they bring? And she said, hmm, somewhere between 20 and 40 bucks. But that's when it's in a lot with a lot of other things. So you don't even get that much for them. So it's really not substantial at all.
For a good cause, too, EMS. Yes.
Okay, well, thank you.
What's that, what's that government code? You say there's a mistake on here. What is it?
It is supposed to be Local Government Code 263.152A4B.
Instead of 7?
Yes.
Okay, do I hear an appropriate motion?
With that change, Judge, I'll make the motion then to authorize, I guess, it's the trade, the purchasing, or the sheriff to donate.
Donate.
He's going to donate the tough books, 12 of them slated for disposal or salvage per Local Government Code 263.152A4B that serves public purpose.
Second. Second by Commissioner White. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye. All opposed? Motion carries 5 to 0. Thank you both. May save a life there. Okay, that brings us to item number nine. And I've got a lot of people that want to speak here, and so we'll do it. But we'll start off with Mr. Drew Whitaker. The item is discuss and take appropriate action to migrate county systems currently on NetData Corporation to Tyler Technology System. Mr. Drew Whitaker.
Thank you. Back again.
Okay.
For the same dead horse five years ago. Well, I guess I could start from the beginning. Earlier this year, I met with Commissioner Eagle, and of course, he wanted me to go out and get some quotes to see what it would cost. Of course, at the time, no one could predict COVID, and, you know, it's starting up and running rampant. But I still got the quotes regardless. And of course, last Commissioners Court, I put on to sign a five-year, or a continuation, an interlocal agreement with Sulfur Springs and Franklin County Sheriff's Office to, I guess, start the migration for NetData. And then, of course, now we're thinking maybe going back the other way and going with Tyler. And so really, it's just the court needs to make a decision on what we want to do, whether we stick with NetData for another five years, or we start looking down the path of moving to Tyler. And of course, I'm all for Tyler. Of course, I've been that way, same with the director before me. There is efficiency and effectiveness gained with going to this system. Otherwise, I would not bring it before you. It's like, but as always, and I've mentioned the last few courts, effective and efficiency always has an upfront cost. So whether we want to spend the money now, we want to wait five years, kick it down the road again, it's up for discussion, really.
Well, you say kick it down the road, but last time in court, you came and said that you're kind of at a decision, you got to do something. You're either going to sign up again for another five years with NetData?
Yes.
Or not, so.
That's correct. So that's what I'm saying.
Something's got to happen, right?
Something's got to happen at this point.
So I just want to make sure that's clear.
Yeah, absolutely. Something's got to happen, you know.
I've got two questions on this.
Sure.
And I'm not an IT person. Another IT person watched our previous court talking about this, and he said he had some concerns. And I'm not far against either NetData or Tyler. I'm just, just concerns that he brought up to me that really, that really worried me. Said being a third party housed in another city or county, security issues by a third party. He said, also, another question is, if that data cannot meet the CJIS/FBI requirements, why sign? I don't know nothing about that, but...
No, I totally understand. So regardless if we go with Tyler and/or NetData, we will meet the CJIS requirements. They both have a system in place, you know, to meet and/or beat the requirements by the state. And of course, if you are still not comfortable moving to a hosted solution, putting it in their cloud, essentially, Tyler...
Okay, we do our own cloud. That's how...
We do have our own cloud, technically, and so there is a local cost to that. I mean, originally, when we signed with NetData, we had the same option. However, it was cheaper to go with a hosted solution.
I got you.
And of course, the court, that's the court they wanted, you know, the court signed, they all agreed, everyone up here agreed that that's the way we wanted to do it. Of course, now we go that route, and now it was, you know, tabled the agenda item until now, I guess, for this court. So I went out and got quotes. I know that hosting it in another cloud, essentially, has some concerns and some people worried. And so again, that's why I got a local cost as well on here for Tyler. We could bring it in-house, just like everything else we do here. Again, it's more money upfront, but of course, it's a lot cheaper in the long run.
Drew, let me add something. If you went with Tyler right now, it would take about 16 months before you actually just cut off NetData.
Yes. Currently, right now, the projected timeframe is 14 months. It's a project of over 4,500 man-hours to get everyone that is not converted, converted. And of course, that is half the county that didn't want to go with Tyler originally, so.
I know when we went with Tyler before, county, district clerks were the first started this, got her set up, and then went to another department, got them set up, kind of staggered it for everybody.
And that's what would happen. I mean, again, within that 13 months, there will be probably someone down here every single day, you know, because we have to sit, and even from our staff as well. Not only will we have Tyler reps down here, my staff will be in there because we have to move all that data over to Tyler.
I think I'm the only court member that did this, that was here during this transition. Tony, am I correct? Tony, you was the first one, right?
14, I think it was 14 or 13.
And I know everybody that, and I'm not, I'm not against NetData. I'm not preaching for one or the other. I just know when you first started, it was a headache.
Yes.
And then once they got familiar with it, got situated with it, they wouldn't trade it for nothing.
Exactly.
Am I correct or not?
That's correct.
So is the fear just fear of change, or is it...
I mean, that's my opinion, yes. As someone that has to constantly change and keep up and/or exceed the constant, yes. We change all the time. But I know a lot of people don't like change, and that's...
How much would we still have to pay NetData while we're...
So while we're converting, we'd have to pay another year, and that would be $148,000 a year. So this next year, if we did decide to go this route, we'd pay it for one more year. That would get us the time to convert over, and then we'd just stop paying the following year.
Do I now, Becky? Becky, didn't you, didn't you do some checking with the other counties and find out who's still on NetData and who's on Tyler?
I can give you that information. No one around us is on NetData.
That's where I got that information.
Steadenville, Steadenville, Erath County is the last county, I mean, other than us. They just signed to convert all the way over to Tyler in July, end of July.
So is there some fear if that's going that way, that with less and less people on NetData, is that an issue?
I guess so. I guess so. I mean, we are now the only, we're the only county in this region that's on that data, or support even a dual system.
When you say this region, what, I mean, how far from Hood County are you talking about?
Just around us, DFW.
Around the counties that connect to us?
Yep, and DFW.
This spreadsheet that you handed us, you've got a hosted on the cloud and a local, but both of those are, proposals are Tyler. Is that correct?
That is correct. Yes, sir.
And you would recommend that we do a local?
Personally, I'd say local. I mean, the way I look at it is, if I'm going to get yelled at because it doesn't work anyway, might as well, at least I can fix it while it's here. I mean, I can't, I wouldn't be able to do anything if it's on their cloud, you know?
Well, and there's, I have some, certainly have some philosophical issues with the cloud idea, you know, in a worst-case scenario.
Absolutely. And like I said, for local, it's a, of course, it's more upfront because we're buying the licenses and everything. However, your yearly is significantly cheaper on a year-to-year basis.
Yeah.
Because that's where we save the money in the long run.
Shows about $57,000 a year savings to be local.
That is correct.
Just over, just under $500,000 more cost upfront, but your savings are...
Yes.
$70,000, $80,000 a year.
Yes, sir.
And we thought, I had it in my mind, we were going to have a workshop on this before, and I guess we didn't have that. It looks like we may have one right now with all the people who have signed up to speak on this. But I am interested in, I've heard it both ways.
Well, of course. I mean, it's, everyone's different. So I mean, again, I'm just, I'm again, at the point, after beating this dead horse with the different tools every year, it seems, just make a decision. Like, it doesn't bother me either way. Make a decision. I mean, again, there is efficiency and effectiveness gained and a savings eventually in the long run for moving to Tyler. But that is, again, the court has to decide... But that is, again, the court has to decide that value and make that decision.
Commissioner Eagle is correct. Eight people have signed up to speak, both four. So why don't you just be available right here? Don't go away, Parkers. I'm sure that you'll be last questions, and I'm taking the people that want to testify or want to give their opinion about this in the order in which they presented the public participation form. First is Denise Weaver in, from JP Court Number Four. So Ms. Weaver.
Good morning. I'm Denise Weaver, and I'm the office manager for JP Four. I've worked with NetD for several years. It is very user-friendly. We have small staffs. We move lots of money, and we have a lot of things to do to make sure that we take care of these defendants when they come in. It's a, it's a very easy program for us to manipulate. Also, when we had all the COVID and our staff was very low because of different exposures, somebody could get through things very quick. And we have a phenomenal support system. You call NetData, someone answers the phone. If they are busy, you will get a phone call back in five to 10 minutes. If you figure out something that's not right, they don't hesitate one bit with going to their programmers. They get back to you, and they're always very, very pleasant. I have very limited exposure to Tyler for purchasing. I don't find that what I have experienced is very user-friendly. I have to double up on entries every time. There's at least two steps to do one process, which doesn't make it very beneficial for court clerks on a JP level. So I am against it. I think that we use it, why fix something that's not broken? So that's all I've got to add.
Let me ask you, how much Tyler experience do you have?
Just very limited. I stated I have very limited experience. My limited experience is just doing a purchase order. I have to enter for one purchase order that information multiple times.
Where did you do that?
In the Tyler system for purchase orders, because we do have the icon on our desktops.
So you, so that's, that's the extent of your Tyler?
That's the extent of my Tyler experience.
Thank you.
Okay.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Weaver. Okay, next, we have the man himself. We have Judge Danny Tuggle from JP Court Number Four. Judge Tuggle.
Good morning, sir.
Good morning, Judge, Commissioners. Thank y'all for giving me a little bit of time to speak today. I'm your proverbial lame duck. I'm going out. But I do have great concern for the people that work in my office and for the constituents they represent. This system that we've got, NetData, works great for criminal justice. Tyler is an accounting program that was set up for accounting. It's not set up specifically for criminal justice. I've spoken, I was the only one speaking up for NetData five years ago. So at that time, I spoke to JPs around the state that had recently switched from, their counties had forced them to switch to Tyler, and they were not pleased with the Tyler system. They claimed that it was not user-friendly. I haven't spoken with any of the people around us recently. I thought we were going to have a workshop before we made a decision on this, so I didn't have the time to get in touch with all the JPs that surround us. So I don't know what their, their results are on how they're accepting the Tyler system. Let's see. As Denise said, Tyler, or NetData is extremely user-friendly. If we have a problem, like you say, we can call them in five minutes, have somebody on the line with us, work us through a problem. If there's something serious, they resolve it within overnight with less than 24 hours. Whereas, the Tyler system has been having glitches for the last two weeks. We've been getting emails from Drew about the glitches they're having for two weeks now. And so I don't know, I just, I think if something's not broke, let's don't fix it. If it's working good for criminal justice, I think we need to leave it where it's at. And I'm all for the folks that have Tyler. I'm, I hope that it works great forever for them. But I just think that the NetData system is better suited for criminal justice. That's all I've got to say. And I'll answer any questions if anybody's got any.
You know what, these, I gotta ask this. What, what's a glitch?
A glitch?
Mm-hmm.
It's, well, I don't know. That's.
We'll find out. I'm just curious.
I'm not a technical wizard.
Okay.
Tuggle, you say it's for criminal justice. Now, look, currently using Tyler, I see the county clerk, district court, I mean, I mean, district clerk, district court, district attorney.
They're for record-keeping.
Oh, okay. I just didn't know if.
Yep.
I thought they were criminal.
And, and, you know, from what we do, it's a little bit different than, than even that. And so thousands of pieces of paper go through our office weekly, and NetData works great for us. And I just, from what I've heard from other JPs that have switched to Tyler, I don't particularly think it would be a good program for us to go to at this time. That's just my opinion. All right. Thank y'all very much.
Thank you, Judge Tuggle. Okay, next is Tina Villa. Good morning.
Hi, I'm Tina Villa. I'm with Hood County JP Two. Judge Castillo did want me to let you know that he is out on a call this morning, and that he didn't want me to come and represent our office. We are against going to Tyler because we enjoy the NetData program that we have. The icon system works really well. Like, I'll just reiterate what Denise said. It is a very user-friendly. It does help us do our job quicker and more efficiently. We just changed September 1st to $20,000 jurisdictional limit, and that right there will kind of give us a few, I don't know, maybe bumps in the road along the way. So we would like to, you know, stay on a system that would help us continue to give the best service we can give to the customer. You know, NetData, when we call them, we do get the help we need. I mean, I'm just, it's exactly the truth. We get the people to explain things to us where we understand it, and it's, you know, easy for us to fix any issues we might have. And it's just something that we can teach any new people that come in very quickly and then more efficiently. So we just enjoy the system. We enjoy the help we get from it, and we don't have any, we usually don't have very many issues. So.
Have you ever worked with Tyler at all?
I do, I do purchase orders through Tyler, and I do, no, just purchase orders, for whenever we have, like, autopsies or Parks and Wildlife. And when I have to put those in the system to get a PO to get, send up auditing.
Okay. Any other questions?
Excuse me, I'm sorry, I didn't catch. You said you do purchase orders with Tyler. What else?
Parks and Wildlife, whenever we have to pay out for Parks and Wildlife, if we get tickets written from Parks and Wildlife, and then the defendant comes and pays it, there's a portion of that money that goes to the state, so we have to do the purchase orders through Tyler.
Have you had problems with that?
No, not with that. The purchase orders, there's a lot of steps to go through, but it's not, it's not difficult, but it's time-consuming.
Would you call that part of criminal justice, the Parks and Wildlife issue, or is that an accounting issue? Or is it?
It's a class C misdemeanor, so it's criminal, I guess.
Game ward and stuff, right?
Yes, sir.
Drew, I got a question for you. NetData, we've got NetData, we've got Tyler. So the people that are on NetData are trying to work some issues with Tyler. Is that the reason some of them are saying they don't like Tyler because NetData don't intertwine with, NetData don't intertwine with Tyler? Or am I chasing rabbits?
So right now, if they are on NetData for CGIS?
Yeah.
They would be entering purchase orders in Tyler. That would be, Odyssey is completely different than Tyler and Code.
Right.
So they do not.
That's kind of some of the hiccups, because NetData and trying to go in, from NetData into Tyler to do stuff. If it's all Tyler, it'd be easier, is what I'm trying to say.
Yes. Do the whole chain.
Okay. Do you have anything else?
No, sir.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Appreciate you coming down.
Thank you.
Okay. Next is Dean Armstrong.
Good morning, gentlemen.
Good morning.
I'm probably the longest user of NetData here in the county. I worked for them at one time, but that, they fired me, so it's not like I have anything to protect them, right? So the Commissioners, the Commissioners Court hire our IT directors. I've been around long enough to have seen just about every IT director and their personnel since the beginning of computer systems here in the county. Up until Jackie, all the other IT people were AS400 people, meaning that they were hired here with the software that we had. So Jackie was hired and then left, and Drew took his place because y'all picked him, not you personally, but your positions, who knew nothing about technology. You hired somebody who was against what we had, and now it's no surprise they want it changed. So you talk about efficiency in the county offices, but nobody who's sitting here talking about efficiency knows how to do our jobs. None of y'all nor the IT director knows what efficiency is in our place. Okay? So one thing that hasn't been talked about is the counties that have NetData versus counties who don't. Like, our county, we have nine IT people. So counties that have, that are pretty similar in population, who are just on NetData, these are how many IT people they have in their office. Nacogdoches, they have one. They have more population than us. Clever County, two. Hopkins County, three. Cass County, three. B County, two. Montgomery County, three. Rockwall County, one. Titus County, three. Young County, two. Polk County, three. So when you go away from an AS400 platform that's super stable and needs no help, and you go to PC-based software, you need extra personnel. One of the things in the county clerk's office that happened here recently is that the software enabled us to cut down a position or 25% of the county's, county clerk's budget for salary in the judicial field. We actually reducing sal, reducing the amount of employees instead of, instead of gaining more. And that's what my comment the other day was about, about that. Also, there's an Attorney General opinion, GA 571, that basically states that unless it's a financial burden, that the Commissioners don't have the authority to select software for elected officials. And that's also backed up by the Commissioners Court of Harris County versus Fullerton. It's an appellate case that states, that, that states the same thing. I want to help in any way I can. We love our software. It's super easy, and it works for us. And I wish I had a heck of a lot more than three minutes. I mean, you gave other people coming up here who want to get rid of it longer than three minutes, I would love longer than three minutes.
Dean, I got a question for you.
Please, sir.
Is NetData going to be here forever, or is it slowly?
It's still in one-third of the entire state of Texas.
Okay. I'm not, I'm not against NetData.
Yeah, I know, I know.
I want the best thing for y'all.
I know, but you just get misinformation.
Right.
You know, people do have agendas. They have their own personal agendas.
I'm surprised that NetData is going to go away one of these days.
Why?
I don't know. I mean, everybody, it sounds like everybody's getting away from it.
It's, it goes that way back and forth, you know? NetData takes over Tyler counties, it's political. It's what's happening right here today. Okay? So it's a political thing. When you have an elected official that comes in, and, and they might be from another office, or they have their own experiences, right? And so, so they're using those experiences, and they may want to get rid of the software that they want because they've been, they've, they've talked to somebody who says that this is better and everything like that. This is the same old game. I used to do demos for NetData against Tyler. Okay, I've seen their stuff. I've actually gone and visited counties and looked at their software. I've been kicked out of one of their demos before, you know, because I wanted them to show us, everybody in the group, how certain things worked, and they refused to do it, and I got kicked out. You know, it's crazy. It's a political thing. So why do you want to spend millions of dollars to change the color of a screen? Tyler's good. So is NetData. They're equal. Okay? So NetData's paid for. All we, all we pay is maintenance agreements. Tyler, we'd have to buy the software and the maintenance agreements. So why are you wanting to spend a millions or a couple of million to $2 million of the taxpayers' money just to change the color of a computer screen or to make IT happy?
Dean, I got a question for you. You talk about efficiency and stuff.
Yes, sir.
Can you correct me if I'm wrong? Was, when y'all gave away a position in y'all's office, that was to give y'all a raise?
No, sir. That has no.
You benefited from it.
Well, I can't help what I benefit from. I benefit from y'all voting on doing, on a raise. I didn't ask for it. You know.
But you got it.
I'd like to address that question. Since I'm the one that made the decision to give up an employee, it wasn't due to a raise, it was due to the fact that we were efficient. We were going paperless. We had less work to do. And during that year of going paperless, we found ourselves with less, with more time on our hands because we had less work to do, because we were so efficient. We went paperless. So I was able to give up a position. And in doing so, I asked to keep the same money in my budget to benefit my employees. That's how that happened.
Dean, I got, I seen you shaking head when I read this.
Yes, sir.
Again, I'm not against NetData.
No, I'm just an emotional kind of person.
I tried to get y'all the best thing. I seen you shaking your head when I was reading. If NetData cannot meet the CJIS/FBI requirements, why sign?
We're one of the best in the state. I'm not talking about NetData. I mean, that's because, because it's software and personnel. Prior to them, okay, y'all, you were here, we were the worst in the state in CGIS. And that had to do with the Commissioners approving a, an APAS system for the Sheriff's Office that, that just messed up. I know y'all probably don't know how CGIS works.
I don't.
But arrest is made, the county has a block of TRN numbers, that's a tracking number, okay, for, for the arrest. An arrest is made by an arresting agency, and, and somebody fills out, and here it's our jail, fills out a TRN and fingerprint card, sends it to the state. The state gets that fingerprint card and, and, and that TRN number. And the second part is the prosecutor. So the prosecutor uses the same TRN number to connect with the arrest that tells the state, yes, we're going to prosecute this case, no, we're going to change the arrest, and we're going to prosecute it under something different, or we're going to no-bill it. They have 13 different choices that they can make. State gets that information, says, all right, now we need a disposition. The case goes to court. We fill out the disposition. I've all watched on TV where, where somebody, an arrest, somebody pulls somebody over, officer pulls somebody over, and they, they go back to the car, or you've experienced it yourselves. And, and they ask for their criminal history. That's, that's what we provide. Okay? So that's, so that's what that is. And right now, we're tops. We're in the, we're in the top probably 10% of all counties in the state of Texas on CGIS compliance. The counties have to maintain a 90% CGIS compliance rate over a three-year period, or else they lose all their grant money in the state of Texas. The sheriff, the library, Commissioners, everybody, they lose all their grant money. Okay? If we don't stay 90% compliant, we're about 97% right now. Okay? So it doesn't matter if you switch. If we switch and you, and we fall under 90%, the state doesn't care. The county loses all their grant money. So we have a system that works very well, and the only people who don't like our system are the people who don't know anything about what we do. You can't sit in our chair and do our jobs, just like I can't sit. Maybe I could do some of your jobs, but I'm not real sure. But, but the people who want us to change are people who can't do our jobs, that know nothing. I've got about 28 years of experience, okay? One thing, also in the Tyler system, you say Tyler, and you ask the auditor, Becky Kidd, who's my friend. Hi, Becky. I'm not really worried about it. So you ask her about the Tyler software, and she's like, I love it, you know, Net Data, it was trash, blah, blah, blah. Yeah, okay. I'm happy for you. No, I'm, I'm talking to them, I'm not talking to you. No, ma'am. So, so I'm happy.
Damn, damn, that's not going to cut it here.
No, no, no. I'm saying I'm happy.
This is being disrespectful. You need to stop it.
Okay. So I'm happy for her, but they don't know how to do our job. If another office wants to use Tyler, like Becky, or the Treasurer's Office, or Tona, I'm happy for them, okay? But don't put it on me because they happen to like the software.
Let me ask you a question.
Yes, sir. Yes, sir.
You know, I'm looking up here, all the JPs and all the constables.
Yes, sir.
are on Net Data, and I, from looking at everybody here, they want to stay on Net Data.
Yes, sir.
Okay? Okay, with that one exception. Are you speaking?
Okay.
Okay. I think everybody else is on this deal. Let me ask you this. My simple question is, is it impossible to run, let the ones that want, like, we're just looking at here, remove all the JPs and the constables, can they stay on Net Data and everybody else be on Tyler?
So the main efficiency gained here would be the start of it all at the Sheriff's Office. Right now, the Sheriff's Office and the jailers have to do dual entry, because Net Data is not smart enough to take a person and assign it to a case. So they have to enter the information into Spillman, their system, and then turn around and enter the same information into Net Data. So essentially, you would be eliminating one system from the Sheriff's Office for data entry, and that, of course, is money saved, because that's time not wasted entering the same.
Well, but you didn't, you didn't answer my question specifically, since I'm looking right here at this thing. If all JPs and all constables kept Net Data, because I understand they collect money on fines and things like that, which may be different from IT and what Ms. Kidd does, or whatever deal, can they operate efficiently by running both of them?
No.
Yes.
No.
The only, the only reason.
Okay, let me, okay, and I'm going to let everybody say something here, including you, Ms. Kidd. Go ahead, Dean.
So, so I don't believe Drew is here when we went to, when the sheriff went to Spillman, is that correct? Or, I don't believe he was. I think Commissioner Dever is the only one. And so, that was during Rod, that was when Roger was running for office and the sheriff was leaving, and so, so they, they needed a new CAD system, a computer-aided dispatch, the sheriff, and they wanted to go with the same computer-aided dispatch that Granbury PD used, or some, that connected with them. I'm not sure with Spillman. So Spillman gave the sheriff and the county a free jail system. So why would they give a free jail system, okay? So the Commissioners bought into it, they passed it, now the, the jail went away from Net Data, it went into a, this free jail system, and it didn't meet state specs. It, the, the.
I wasn't, I wasn't here when they did Spill.
Really, when Emily was let go?
No.
Okay. So, so the Commissioners bought this system that didn't meet state specs, didn't, it didn't have CEGIS, right? It, it could not do CEGIS. When we asked for it, I was sitting next to Tona in the training, and I, I said, what about CEGIS? And they said, what's that? And I was like, oh, my gosh. Okay, so it didn't meet, so y'all bought a software for the jail system and book-in that didn't even, when I say y'all, I don't mean you individuals, for anybody writing this down, not y'all, but the Commissioners Court of Hood County bought this system, or got it for free, which ended up costing like $700,000. Didn't meet the state specs. We had a big old hoopla over it, and, and so the Commissioners passed a, a thing to allow the, the sheriff to, to get more employees, so they could go ahead and do the double entry, use the Spillman, because that's what they wanted to use, and then they had to input it in Net Data, because Net Data had CEGIS and was complied with the state regulations. So it wasn't Net Data's fault that a bunch of men chose to a software that shouldn't have ever been used, and didn't meet state specs.
You're not going to be able to sit here and educate this court in this length of time on how both of these things work. That ain't going to happen.
Yes, sir.
Not, not to me. So I just let you know, so all we're trying to do is figure out, can you still do your job, or do you have enough experience with Tyler to know that you can or can't do your job if we, the court, or the county goes over to Tyler?
I could do my job no matter what.
There you go. Okay. I, I, that's, okay, answer my question. Thank you.
Okay. Let's go on. Becky?
Gentlemen, I've been here for both. I've been here 22 years. I've worked with both systems. When we converted from Net Data to Tyler, it was not the easiest thing in the world, and it took some weeks and months to get it straightened out. So I've worked with both systems. I wouldn't go back for any amount of money. I know the auditor in E wrath County, and I know the auditor in Johnson County. The auditor in E wrath County couldn't wait to get on Tyler. That's the first thing he did when he got to E wrath County. I know there's a lot of emotions here. I know it's tough for change. I've worked with Icon. Icon and Tyler are a lot similar. I've worked with both. We, we are here to tell you that our office will jump through hoops if you choose to go to Tyler to help anybody who needs this. One of my big problems with Net Data is they will allow an employee, any employee, to call and delete receipts. We've written them letters, I've talked to the people at Net Data and asked them to not do this, and they continue to do this. This happened recently. There's no accountability when that happens, and they go, well, we don't know who did it. We're not sure who called in, we're not sure who deleted this receipt on our end. But it does happen, and that's unacceptable. So that's one of my big concerns with Net Data. But again, I know everybody here, the emotions are high, but we will do whatever we can to help any department, if you choose to convert.
Are you using Net Data at all?
Sir?
Are you using?
Yes, sir. We have to use it to run reports for the various departments that still use it. That's how we complete our monthly reports. So we're familiar.
Your objection on Net Data is that you, you have found that there's been receipts that they couldn't account for.
That's correct.
All right, thank you.
Okay. Next is, speaking on this topic is Judge Cotton Howell. Judge, oh, there he is.
Good morning, Your Honor. Good morning, Commissioners. Well, there's been a lot of hoopla up here, and so the only thing I have to say, I came into office when Icon came. I was the first office that had Icon. So we were on a brand-new Net Data system when we started our office. So as, the worst thing that's happened to anybody is I got to tell other people how to use their thing once, once we got started. But Net Data, the Icon system is tailored just for us. It's for us to enter cases in our courts. Other ones also, I understand that. I mean, I understand the higher courts also can use it, but it's tailored for JP courts. That's what it's for. Net Data is, as anyone, as everyone else has said, is very friendly. You get a new employee in, it costs the county an overnight stay at a motel in Sulfur Springs, and you can send them up there, and they spend the whole day with the Net Data people, showing them how to run the system. That's, that comes with it. Like everybody else says, it's a phone call away. All I can say is, when this issue came up three, four years ago, every school I went to, I talked to every judge that I could, that was either on Tyler or on Net Data. The only people I found that were really in favor of Tyler are the ones that were on the old green screen out there in West Texas, are still doing it, are still doing it with a pencil and a, a number-two pencil and a Big Chief tablet. So they were happy as could be, because that, now they had something they could do on their computer. One judge, I'll, the only testimonial that I'll talk about, I had one judge in Johnson County that told me that they put, the Commissioners put him on Tyler, and his chief clerk told him, I would rather do it with a number-two pencil and a Big Chief tablet than to try to run this thing. So that's all I've got to say about it.
Okay, thank you.
One more. The ones that did like it, besides the green screen people, they all had someone either in their office, or one of the JPs in that county had someone in their office that was the Tyler advisor for everybody on how to fix things on that system, or how to negotiate through it. Thank y'all.
Okay. Okay. Next speaker is Katie Lang.
Good morning, Judge, Commissioners. Just wanted to say a few things about Net Data. It works great in our office. From what I'm, I'd like to explain, there's different software programs for each office, like Becky's got Tyler, and it's a specific program for auditing. There's the purchasing, there's a specific program for purchasing, and anybody that writes a PO knows Tyler to get on the system and input a PO. So for case management, Net Data works for us, for our office, and what our job is and what we do. I understand that they're, you know, both equal, but why would we spend $1.3 million to convert to something that we are already happy with? And the, you know, the, what's it called? The support, the customer support is great. I mean, I have never had a problem with it. They, I always get answered, they click into my computer, look at my computer, fix it there, or they work with IT and do the same thing. So it's either an IT problem, or it's a Net Data problem, and they work together great. So as far as secured records in Net Data and Tyler, I have an article here from January 10th, 2020, Wichita County District Clerk is sounding alarm that court clerks are unable to secure cases in the county's new Odyssey software. Flora said the problem affects the court records held by her office, the county clerk, and the justices of the peace. So there's, there's that issue with Tyler. Somebody brought up the same issue with Net Data, that it's not secure. Well, they both have the same problem. If it's not resolved, I have never heard that from Net Data, but I do have a article here that, that records that. And then Tyler has problems too. I mean, they, in my records office, my land office, I'm on Tyler, and we have had an issue since August 9th, I think it's been about a month now, where we're having title companies call and say they're getting a similar error message about having an unexpected error. If they submit it again, and through the third-party website, it'll finally go through, and we can process it. We're still having the same issue as well as multiple times a day. After choosing okay, and then going on, it will let us continue working. Keisha spoke with Tom in IT, and he restated, restarted server 54. This should help with the error. He says to call him every morning to restart server 54, and see if that makes a difference when it comes to getting this error. As, as far as I know, we are still calling. Is that right? Okay. And then, this is from September 1st. Good morning, all. I just found out there's a glitch in Tyler that will not allow us to print your backup recs for our files. This is a key part of our retention, our record retention for our office. IT has informed me that it's an issue with Tyler's end, and they're working on it. So, you know, glitches are going to happen, no matter what software you have. But I'd just like to point out that every software for, that's signified for each office has a different program behind it, written by different people. So like, I love our land records Tyler, it's great, but for case management, you know, we have Net Data. So, and, you know, Becky's got her, what's it called? In code, from Tyler. So there's different programmers that write different software, and they might not all be good. Some might be good than, better than others. So you have to look at that. You can't just put it all in one basket and say, Tyler's good, Net Data's good. You have to break it out. And what is the annual maintenance fee for Tyler? I don't know that that was discussed.
Currently, or what it would cost?
What it would cost?
They're comparable right now. They're about the same.
Okay, so they're the same. So I guess that's, that's about all I have, is.
You have two offices. You have the county clerk's office at Annex Two, and then you have the office here in the Justice Center.
Yes, sir.
And then one you use Tyler, and the other one you use Net Data.
Yes, sir.
Correct?
Yes.
So what's, what is the one that you use in the?
Land office?
In Annex Two? What is?
Eagle, Eagle Recorder. It's Tyler. And that helps us with the birth certificates, death certificates, that kind of thing, issuing to the state, and that kind of stuff, and land records.
Do they use also Net Data in Annex Two?
No.
Okay.
So one of your offices use Tyler?
Yes.
Because there's a program that's specifically like for birth and deaths?
Yes.
And deaths and.
Yeah, and we love that.
And all that?
The programmer that wrote that software was great. Yes, we love that.
Let me ask you this. Does Tyler have a program that's specifically created for JPs and constables?
Does Tyler? I don't know.
Do you know? Drew?
JP four.
Constable Fullbacker is raising his hand.
Okay. Do you know?
Project, they have Odyssey, and constables, they have a program they've rolled out on SOC code. Those are the two that they have. SOC code is unfortunate that Pitten County and Johnson County are starting to use on the constable side, and Odyssey is what the JP's.
Is that Tyler?
And that's Tyler?
And, you know, Odyssey would be the program that would replace our Net Data. And so I haven't heard anything bad, really, about Odyssey. I don't, I've never seen it. I have, you know, I haven't had the time to investigate it, but, you know, to me, it's a money issue. Do you want to spend $1.3 million for something that you already have? Because you're.
I think you know this court up here is pretty conservative. We want to.
Right.
The county's money up here.
It's on the taxpayer's shoulders, you know?
You're telling me that on Tyler, and I didn't know this, that the district clerk may be on a different type of Tyler program than the district court, for example?
They are on the same. They use Odyssey.
Okay. But what about on the district clerk and purchasing, for example?
They are on different. That is correct. One would be on Odyssey, and they're on In code.
And same for, there's, there's one for Becky's office, there's one for Nelda's office, there's one for the district clerk. They're all different programs, written by different people.
Okay, Tona, I'm going to get you to testify last up here, about here, because you have been on both, and you did sign a public participation, but I'll make an exception.
Yeah, my issue's with, with how much money you want to spend, because either, you know, either program.
Yep. Yep.
What I, what I didn't understand yet is, can we, can we keep operating the same way that we are operating, where the people that want to stay on Tyler, stay on Tyler, and the people that want to stay on Net Data can stay on Net Data?
I think.
What's the diss?
That's for Drew.
Tell me what's wrong with that.
Drew, Drew, that's your question.
Yes, I know, and that's the thing. So again, we can continue doing what we are doing now, however, the biggest thing, like I just said before, is the Sheriff's Office. They are double-entering, and that takes hours of time. So that is taxpayer money and man-hours, entering the same data multiple times to start a So that is taxpayer money and man-hours entering the same data multiple times to start a process. If we move to Tyler, the sheriff's over there in the corner. If we move to Tyler, they only have to operate out of one system. So immediately, they effectively gain a 50% efficiency rate in the jail and the patrol.
See, Tona, I was on the court when we went. Tona was the same way. She's having a double entry, double entry. And I was, I was not on the court when Spillman come in. I was, I inherited that problem. Drew, I'm talking.
What's up, sorry?
That's the reason is brought up. I inherited Spillman. I was not, I wasn't one of the court members, she said, let's buy it. But I remember when Tona got on there, she come to court and she's the first one that went to Tyler, said, I'm having a double entry, all this stuff. I can save time, save money if we go to Tyler. Am I correct, Tona?
Was that on archiving? Because we have the same software, Net Data, and you don't have to double entry anything. I don't know what you're, what she's talking about.
That's just why she brought the court.
I don't know what she was talking about.
And that's what Drew's saying about the sheriff. He's having a double entry.
Now, the sheriff, yes, I've heard, I've heard that. And can the sheriff not get a separate software Tyler package?
I don't know.
We would be able, so if we implement Tyler, that's, so going back history-wise, this goes back to the previous director, Jackie. We have even reached out to Net Data to see, to pay Net Data. We would pay Net Data to build some kind of interface to make the programs talk to each other.
No, that's not what I asked.
And that data would not do it.
Okay.
So to follow back around with your question.
Okay.
If we move to Tyler, Net Data and Tyler will be able to speak to each other. So the sheriff will only have to operate out of one program.
Okay, well.
Net Data will not do that. So again, that would be back on the court. If they want to pay the man-hours to enter data multiple times.
So let me get, so if he goes to Tyler, we would have to go to Tyler? Is that what you're saying?
Yes, because it all starts with the sheriff.
Okay.
Well, here, let me throw this in then. I need to see, I want to see a spreadsheet. You, you just told us that the, that there's, I don't know how many man-hours we're talking about. It's very vague. Sheriff, do you know exactly how many man-hours we're talking about to do this double entry? Or can you show us some figures?
I didn't bring the figures with me, but for every person that's booked in, so weekends are more than during the week, but every person that's booked in, we're doing it twice.
So, okay.
Which takes a little bit of time.
So, okay, so the question is, how long does it, what are we talking about? Three minutes, 10 minutes, 20 minutes?
Probably 20 to 30 minutes for each person.
Thank you.
But like Drew started to say, I'll fill out one of these sheets in a minute, I guess, if you want me to fill it out. Yeah, we went with Spillman almost 12 years ago. Well, actually it was 12 years ago when the court decided to move forward with it. Net Data could not do a computer-aided dispatch system. We gained a lot of other stuff with Spillman too, by moving to that. Now I've got almost 12 years of information that I don't want to lose and why should I have to lose it? When this whole system starts by basically law and order, with the arrests that's made, then the information goes out to the JP's, goes to the county clerks, goes to everybody that needs that information. If people weren't arrested for doing wrong, then we wouldn't have a, have to worry about anything. But anyway, here we are since 1866 and we've had to move forward with that. So the information starts with me, so why should I have to change to anything? But right now, for 11 and a half years, we're doing double entry. So, and Net Data has never wanted to work with us to fix that.
Correct.
So we just keep plodding along.
Well, is that data's reasoning for not wanting to fix that?
They, again, they didn't want to work with us at all and, okay.
Dean, you raised your hand here. Did you notice that you worked for them, got fired or?
Yes, sir. It's because they don't want to, they don't want to work with their main, one of their main competitors. I mean, the Dallas Cowboys don't loan out their quarterback to the Eagles. It's that simple. And, and the, the jail isn't double entering, not because of Net Data, it's because Spillman doesn't meet the state recs. When they went to Spillman, Net Data saved them. They are double entering, but it's not in spite of Net Data. It's because Spillman doesn't do C, just doesn't meet up with the state regulations.
Judge, you shake, I mean, the sheriff shaking his.
Dean, you're shaking. Really, you're shaking. Sheriff, give me your reason. Dean shaking her head.
It's the same dead horse that's been beaten over and over again. That's, again, it's just like, just make a decision. It doesn't bother me whether we stay with Net Data, we do it, move, it doesn't matter.
Katie, I'd like to address your, the money thing, if you don't mind. You said that you had a problem with spending the million dollars on the spreadsheet. What we got here is that we are gonna spend an additional, what's gonna cost us additional $400,000 to go to, to Tyler, but annually, we'll be saving over $70,000 a year. Sooner or later, we'll catch up. Now, I agree that immediately, it's gonna cost us more money, but we're gonna save more money by in-housing with Tyler and not doing the cloud and the issues that James brought up. So I just want to make sure that was clear in my mind. Is, is that right, Drew, or?
No, because they have a maintenance fee too. And they just said it was comparable to what Net, what Data, Net Data's paying. So you're gonna pay the same maintenance fee, no matter what software program you have.
In-house or cloud, is that right, Drew? Is that true? I just want to, I'm just trying to get it straight in my mind, so.
So right now for Odyssey, for Tona's office, we pay $68,000 a year. Right now for Net Data, pay $148,000 a year. So if we move.
But you're, is that for one office? Cause my office doesn't cost that much.
That is for all maintenance, for the whole county.
Yeah, you're lumping it all together when you're saying.
But that's, that would be the same thing as if we moved to Tyler, we will be doing the maintenance agreement for the whole county. I mean, it would be the same thing.
And it's gonna be 68 for the whole county?
No, that is just for what's already being paid for.
Right, that's what I'm saying. You're comparing apples to oranges.
So if we, hang on. I get what you're saying.
Yeah.
No, I'd have to break it out. It, it would be cheaper because, so the sheet that I gave you, you would add 68,000 to it for the yearly, what it costs yearly for maintenance, and that's what it would be.
For cloud.
For the whole county.
For being in a cloud.
For the county or, for either or. It'd be depending on the court's decision.
It's basically the maintenance is a wash because it's comparable to both softwares.
Drew, what do we pay for Tyler and Net Data together for the yearly maintenance?
I think it comes out to be around 250,000 or so dollars.
So maybe we, maybe we need to go back to all Net Data and get rid of Tyler.
Well, that's exactly, I agree. Commissioner Cotton, let's, let's talk about that scenario. I mean, we've got 2, 4, 6, 8, 10, 12, 13 on Net Data, then we got 2, 4, 6, 8 offices on Tyler. What would be, what if, I like what ifs. What if we just put everybody back on Tyler? What's the problem with that?
Doesn't bother me.
Doesn't bother you. Doesn't bother him.
I do have one more thing to say and I'll sit down. There is a statute that says each elected official has to, the commissioners' court has to provide them with what they need to run their office. So.
And you couldn't run your office with Tyler?
Well, yeah, I guess.
Oh, well.
Okay, I'll sit down now, thank you.
They're between needs and wants, right? Okay, let's, let's go ahead and get some other people here. I got three more to talk about. Kathy Gwynn, JP 3. You've been listening to all this. Boil this down here.
I have, okay. I was here when it was just Net D, it was not Icon. When that switch happened from Net D to Icon, I was a clerk in Judge Castillo's office and then went to Judge Tuggle's office and, and I feel the darts on my back, back here. You know, it's like, oh, but anyway. There was a huge uproar with the JP's that they did not want to change, but that's, because they were with Net Data, that's what they were going with, something better, new and better. And so they eventually worked it out. Judge Howell's office was the first office. We are still not do everything exactly the same in all the other three JP's office because they worked the kinks out in Judge Howell's office. So what we turn in is a little bit different each month to each one of these on our reports. Just a little bit different because they worked out the kinks and then put the rest of us on that, the other three JP's on it. From what I'm hearing from talking with my clerk, with these other offices, is that for us to be able to go to, and I'm fine with, with Net Data. I mean, I've always known Icon and Net D, all, every, you know, for the whole time I've been here. And so, yes, some of it is why change, but if, the fact is, is that as offices, if we can integrate these things and work better, how we work together as offices, and it's probably gonna be about the same amount of money, from what I'm hearing, is why would we not do that so that you can make each officer, each office run more efficiently? Yes, change is hard. Change is very, very hard for everyone. No one likes change, especially someone as old as I am. So I don't, you know, I don't have a problem with changing because I think, you know, stretch your brain each time and learn something new. And if it accomplishes the same goal that you all want to work for, and that's to make the county more efficient, then why would we not want to go to something like that? And like I said, I do not have a problem with Icon at all. They are, they're great support people. And maybe Tyler doesn't have that as much, but I think it's things that we can work through. But also the fact being is that I have a lot of personal friends with Net D that I've grown with over the years because I have been here a little bit longer. But, you know, none of the clerks that are here now were, went from, Judge Howell was the only one in his office at that time that went from the, into the Icon originally. And that's what happened in his office, first thing off. But none of the other, other than Judge Castillo, was here when it went from Net D to Icon. But the girls don't realize what a change it was from Net D just to the Icon. And I think that it would be the same way with going from Icon to the Tyler system.
It will be. I remember when all these ladies here, what's your change? It was a nightmare.
It was.
They got all the bugs worked out. They said, I'll never go back.
Right. Exactly right.
Thank you.
Thanks.
Thank you, Judge. Okay. Next speaker is Melissa Barnes. Constable's office, Constable Precinct 4 and 2.
Good morning. I just wanted to share my experience with both forms of software. When I started with the county four years ago, I worked for Tona in the district clerk's office. So I am very familiar with the Tyler software in a court product. I'm familiar with the Incode software. And when I came over to the constable's office and started learning Constable Jordan's software on Net Data, I was appalled. I mean, it was completely atrocious. It was basically working in DOS or AS400, which is what I grew up learning back in junior high school. And I honestly think I could keep better records in an Excel spreadsheet than I can in Net Data. My experience in the JP version of Net Data is limited. I mean, obviously I don't use it like the ladies do in the JP offices, but I have been in it enough to know that, yes, it's a little user-friendly and I can see why they like it. The report writing, to me, is very limited. The report writing in the constable's version is extremely limited. I can't even just download a report. I have to print it out every time. I have to waste paper just to get one number to put on my monthly reports for Constable Jordan and Constable Shirley. Tyler is a much more robust system. It has a lot more capabilities and a lot more things where I can see the different offices would need and would use once they opened up their minds and learned how to use it. I understand that change is extremely hard. Like Becky, I would jump through hoops to help anybody learn the Odyssey software or the JP version of Odyssey software. Kristin Hicks, who I worked with at the district clerk's office, feels the same way. I would imagine she would offer herself up also. I just think it's time for the county to come out of the dark, dark ages on a lot of this. As a taxpayer and as an employee, I can see where there's a lot of time and money being wasted. And I think that you spend the money upfront, you come out of the dark ages and you get to using a more efficient and streamlined system. It rolls over into your departments, it rolls over into saving the county money. It just, it benefits everybody across the board. So I think that's really all that I had. So thank you.
Okay, thank you, Melissa. Okay, the next speaker, Kristin Hicks. JP 3.
Let me move this down. I am Catherine Gwynn's office manager and I, unlike any of the other JP speakers, you know, I know they're, they're not on board with the whole conversion, but I did come from Tona's office as well whenever I got moved to be Judge Gwynn's office manager. And I have worked in both. It was a very big learning curve for me to have to move from Tyler Odyssey to the Net Data system. I did not like it at all, but eventually I have come to, you know, be okay with it. But the limited, like Melissa said, reporting is a big thing that Net Data lacks in department wise. The functionality that you have in Odyssey is, is so much more than, than what we had. And I have went to, I've only moved over to the JP office in November, will be two years, and I've went to a couple of conferences and talked to different judges and clerks in the, in there, talking about, you know, that they moved to Odyssey. Judge Monk, that's in Johnson County, I mean, he talks about how he absolutely loved it and he went through the process of convert, converting, and he said it was the best decision that their county ever made because of the functionality that Tyler Odyssey has. And I know that I, I will, just like Melissa said and Becky I know said, would be willing to help any office with whatever, I mean, whatever time and, and that Judge Gwynn would allow me to do, you know, to help any office because I'm not afraid of change and I welcome it, you know? I mean, I think that that's where the county has to go, is to move from a dinosaur sort of, you know, just by my own experience working with both. We're in the dinosaur still ages here with, with Tyler, you're moving forward and staying the same. I mean, it's gonna work, but, you know, eventually, at some point, it may not work. That's my opinion.
Thank you very much, Kristin. Okay. Next speaker, the judge himself, Mr. Judge Castillo. Tona, you're next.
Leave.
Yes, don't leave.
All right. Sorry I couldn't be here a little earlier, I was out on the call, so.
I heard.
Judge Commissioners, like I said, I've been here the longest. Been on 15 years in JP's office in Knockin County, also coming back from the clerk's office and also the Environment Health Department. So I've seen all the changes come through, seen what Net Data can do and can do for us. They have been here for us for the long run. We have great commercials, customer service with them. And then talking about the dinosaur ages, if they had an issue with them, they can fix that issue. Anytime you talk to them about anything they come up with, every system has an issue. Tyler's system doesn't work for JP's. I've got other JP's that I've talked to, especially right now, especially trying to convert into a, from $10,000 to $20,000 jurisdiction, we're gonna have a time on our hands anyway. And try and convert into a new system at this point in time, it's gonna put us really far behind. My court right now, like I said, I've got over 300 and something cases that still need to be filed because we're behind, they sent them so many times that, right now. The clerks are working on that right now to get that done. Net Data, Net Data system works for us. They're getting it done. If we change into another system right now, it's gonna put us in, far behind. So, like I said, anything we have to do, we can do. Like I said, I've been here the longest, worked through all kinds of different changes. The change is gonna happen, it's gonna take a while and it's gonna mess up some stuff. Like I said, every system has some kind of issue. Whether we work with that issue or not, how we do that, is up to us.
I just want to make sure you that Tyler has excellent communication with any problem you have. When I have a problem, I call them and I have never, ever had to wait and resolve it right then. I don't have to wait till the next.
I understand that too. And like I said, that's what we have with Net Data too.
And I just want to make sure you knew that, that they are excellent, their customer service too.
Okay.
Do you have any experience at all with Tyler?
Some, a little bit, as far as what's in the office. Like I said, it seems like it takes us a little longer to get through what we have to do, what we have with Net Data. So it's simple for us to work with, it's easy for us to work with, the system works for us. Like I said, it may work, Tyler might work for their systems, for the way they need it, but Net Data's worked for us the way we need it to. So, just want to give my two cents here. All right?
All right. Thank you, Judge. Tona, let's go. Tona, let's confuse this a little more.
Okay. I didn't fill out a paper to talk. I did know better than that. But I will have to say, I've been here 30 years. We didn't even have any kind of system. We had an in-house programmer, then we went to NetData. And it took me years and years to try to convince Commissioners Court to let me go to something different, and that was Tyler. I had been researching software companies. I don't, every convention I went to, I was looking at all the software vendors. There is no comparison between Tyler Odyssey, which we are now switched over from Odyssey to Navigator just this month, as compared to NetData. I mean, when you're comparing, I don't know, I always compared it to a Volkswagen, which I love Volkswagens, but a Volkswagen to a, you know, a Tesla or a Porsche or something like that, there's no comparison. It was not that difficult for us to transfer from NetData to Tyler. It, it was not hard. It, it took a little bit more time because the technology was so much more than what we had with NetData. And we did have many, we had two or three demonstrations right here in this room. I invited every office in the county to come to them. Some didn't come at all. The ones that did come were really afraid of change. And there's not anything really to be afraid of. NetData came down here for like, I mean, sorry, Tyler came down into Hood County, I think, for six weeks. And they worked with, and I was the only one that was on Tyler. I mean, this was before ENCODE and Jury and all that. And they, they helped us every day. They were here six weeks if we needed them. Now, I didn't go with the hardware because at the time, it was Jackie. And Jackie did not want the hardware in-house because it's a lot more expensive. So, I am a SaaS client, software as a service. We are in the cloud. I've had absolutely no problems with it at all. None. We can do anything that any other office can do. We're compliant with CGS, NICS, I mean, all kinds of different agencies that we can integrate with, with no problems at all. None.
Case management for the.
Case management is excellent. I mean, we could, there's things with Tyler that until you get into it, I guess, and really see it, you don't know how it compares. But it does, there is no comparison with NetData. Our case management system is 110% with, with no problems. I mean, if we have a problem, we call. Or if we really, if they say, "Well, we can't get it done today," go ahead and put it in an incident. We put in an incident report and it's fixed, you know, within the next day.
Well, if you come to court and you say, "When I was on the court when this first started,"
Mm-hmm.
"He was trying to sell, like he was trying to get the court to go with Tyler."
I was begging.
Double hit. I mean, he was having to.
I was begging.
Do things two or three times with NetData versus Tyler.
Yeah. I could tell that the software was not doing what I wanted it to do or what I needed it to do. And I guess when I really realized it is when auditor before Becky, Stan, came to me and said, "Look, Tona, the outside auditors are saying your reports are not good enough." And they said, he said, "We're going to have to upgrade your system some way to get your financial reports in line." So, we did that. And I think it was the outside auditor down in Lake Charles, I forgot who they were.
The Masters.
Yes. And they absolutely gave the auditor grief for months, I think, because our reports were so awful. And they were. You couldn't really account for anything very well. I mean, if you, if you weren't an honest person, you know, you could be bankrupt. But now with Tyler, I'm on Tyler, ENCODE, Tyler Jury. I do all the juries for the whole county. We work with that. Was not hard to learn. And Tyler Odyssey and Tyler Navigator aren't either. I mean, the security is better with Tyler than it ever was with NetData. The e-file, the e-file, it, we would be able to e-file with every office.
That's mandated by the state also.
Yes. Yes. And it's just, there's just no comparison. And I get them liking NetData because it was easy. It was all we had at the time to even look at. But people just, they've said it 100 times, they don't like change. And that's the problem. Nobody wanted to change. Now, you heard from Melissa and from Kristin, and I think Kathy's open to it, it, they've worked for me. They know how it works. And there's several others in the county that have. But it, it's, it's just not that hard to learn it for what you get. Now, the Sheriff's Department, I know he has been double in, as well as triple entering. And now I think he's back to double entering. I'm not sure. But it all does, now, our case management system starts with the jail. And there has been problems because it, there's always room for error if you have to enter one TRN number here, enter it into another software, and enter it into another. And if, if we had the jail, we don't necessarily have to have his mobile CAD or the dispatch or that. But if we had the jail system where all of this starts, which Tyler does have, and it, I mean, it would run so much smoother because it goes from the jail to the DA or jail to, we're all integrate, would be all integrated. We wouldn't have to worry about that. Now, I don't have any problems with the CGS system because ours is usually, we usually don't have any problems at all. We're usually about 100%. But it does start at the jail and you take that chance of it being a different TRN number by the time it gets to the DA and to us. And of course, it ends with us, the clerks, because we're the ones that send it to the state. And that's what stays with all these criminals all their life. So, makes a difference. It, it makes a huge difference. But I understand why people don't want it. I didn't fill out anything to come talk because of that reason. But there's, there really isn't. I mean, I had heard for years that NetData was going away. Well, NetData sold to somebody else. But I don't think that the technology and where we're going today and what we've seen just in this past nearly year, you're going to be way behind if you stay with NetData.
You know, what the sheriff says, that he's got a bunch of information in his office on Christmas and stuff, that he does not want to lose any of his information because it does begin with his office.
Right.
Somebody's arrested, that's step one, when they get arrested and are assigned a number on the deal. Are you familiar enough with, with Tyler that this information that he has, or Drew, this is for you too, that can be integrated into a Tyler system without the sheriff losing anything?
Well, and, and that's.
That can convert it for him without him using his personnel because he needs to keep going for what he's doing right now. I know I'm on the jail committee with him and we got to keep everything straight and all the inmates in and out.
So, if we go with Tyler throughout, the sheriff can keep all his information and he would only have to operate out of the current system he is using. We can make an interface which will transfer all the data, basically in his system, move over to Odyssey. All the information, all the clerks need, they will get it all. And that is currently the issue we have now with NetData, is they do not integrate well with Spillman. So, if we do move to Tyler, yes, the answer is yes. He will continue to have all his data, everything moving forward. And the clerks will be happy because they get all the information correctly. So, because no one is double-entering that information.
What the sheriff's office did, book in, when they book them in, then that information goes straight to Tona and to the DA's office, then under that one number, just entering at one time. Is that correct?
That's correct.
That's correct. So, that is the time slash money saved in man-hours.
Hey, Tona? When you, when you get somebody new in your office, do they, do they usually have experience with Tyler or NetData?
No.
So, how long does it take you, on average, to train a new employee to learn Tyler?
Hmm.
We have three of us.
Okay. There's three in here, but I can tell you, it might, obviously, if they were new and didn't know NetData, it was probably a little bit quicker for them. But if they knew NetData and they switched to Tyler, which I don't think any of you all did, it wasn't hard. You can ask these three. It was not hard for them to learn. It was different.
Even for a person that came in after we needed eye training.
Yes.
No computer experience at all.
We haven't had to have any Tyler employees back down here to retrain or train anyone because the girls, once they learned it in the office, can train the other new ones coming in normally. Or there's someone there in that office to train them. It's.
So, getting back to the question then, somebody new come, you hire somebody new, they come into your office, let's say they have no, zero training either way. When do you, when do you feel comfortable that you can turn them loose and they're handling it pretty well on, on Tyler? I mean, it's pretty much data entry, correct?
I would say 30 days.
At the most.
At the most.
If you have any.
Yeah.
If you have any intelligence, I mean, 30 days at the most. It's very streamlined. It's very step, 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 step. It's, you don't have to go through it a whole lot. You just follow the tabs.
Yeah, it's very user-friendly, really. It's, now, we switched to Navigator and I guess it took them three or four days before they realized the change. It wasn't really change in the software. It was change in the looks of the software. And it could actually do more than what we could do before. But as far as the technology, way above.
Some people are going to be able to, Tona, to catch on a lot faster than some just being.
Sure.
You know, some people need a little bit.
That's right.
Extra time, but it's not, it's just not this earth-shattering.
Right. And I'm not the most computer savvy. There's girls in my office that probably are a lot more computer savvy than I was. I mean, when I came into the county, I wasn't at all. And then we went to NetD and I thought, "Okay, that wasn't too hard to learn." But now with Tyler, I mean, I could see in the years that we were falling behind with technology, every conference I went to, because all the other district clerks could do something a little bit better than I could do. But it took me at least seven years to convince Commissioners Court that I wanted something different. I want something that's going to be better. My bookkeeping's going to be better, my, all of my reports. I don't think Becky has any problems with my Tyler reports as far as being audited. And, you know, I think it works great. Have absolutely nothing bad to say about them. Period.
I guess it comes down to, you know, what you're comfortable with, you know? I got a dinosaur telephone, you know? I'm intimidated by something that, laughing, something that she may use, you know? It's just whatever you, you get comfortable with.
Right.
You know, I mean.
And I understand totally the offices that like NetData. I mean, I get it. I did too for a long time. But there's a whole lot more out there, a whole lot better technology out there. And this world isn't going anywhere but up in technology.
I guess the question that I have is, you know, are we willing to move, you know, into the better technology or stay with what we got?
I think if you stay with what you have right now, you're going to be way behind the eight ball pretty quick.
I do know. I think if you continue putting it off, there's a possibility that it's going to cost a lot more, you know?
Well, I can tell you this. The state of Florida has already gone totally Tyler. With, even in Texas so far, Supreme Court is who makes these rulings. And they, they made the ruling of you have to e-file now, e-file Texas is a Tyler product, research Texas, which anyone can go online to find any of their cases in my court. And that's owned by Tyler. Like I said, numerous states are going totally Tyler. And it's, it's not a bad thing. You may think it's a monopoly, but they're so far ahead in technology than any other software company. I mean, there's others, EDOC and IDOCet and, you know, a lot of others that out there that you could go to. But they don't, they're, they're way down here. Tyler's way above them. And they have the infrastructure to handle it, you know? And software as a service, I don't know, I didn't hear the numbers you were talking about as having it in-house. What is that?
That would be basically in the data center. I mean.
How much though? I don't have my glasses on.
So, basically, in the cloud, total project cost would be 1.1 million, 84,700 or 577,000 annually, 188,930 versus if we did it in-house, we'd be buying the licenses instead of renting them essentially. So, your upfront cost is going to be more at 1.539,250. However, your annual is a lot cheaper. Yes. Lot, lot cheaper. 131,94.
Yeah. That's everybody.
Correct.
In-house.
So, Drew, have you ever, have you done a spreadsheet to show where we are now with Netflix? Netflix.
Don't say that. Then everyone's going to want that.
They already got it.
Everyone want, I know, I was going to say.
That data, excuse me, verse, in other words, where we are right now, have you done a spreadsheet to show, to look at the difference in money over the next five years? If we convert versus what we're spending now and what we're going to be projected to spend for the next five years, have you done that?
No.
Can you do it?
Yes. Is that what you are requesting now?
Well, it would give us a little bit more, it would give us, it would give us numbers on a piece of paper to base a decision on. We've, we've heard, you know, we've heard spirited discussion on both sides of this argument. There's some people that want to leave it where it is and they're, they're fine if, why, you know, if it's not broke, why are we going to fix it? And then some who are more inclined to say, "Let's just get it over with." And so, so at this juncture, for me, it's like, okay, so what's the cost over the next five years? Leave it where it is versus if we make this change? You give us numbers, for instance, here on Tyler. And this is, this is county-wide, correct? These numbers that you get?
Yes, that would be county-wide.
That would include what Tona's already doing.
Yes.
And the, the users that are already on it, the ones you've listed. So, can you give us some numbers for the next, for a five-year spread to show us the difference?
So, you have mentioned it, the prior court. If we continue with NetData, we have a five-year contract. If we continue with Net Data, we have a five-year contract already and it is, it will be 30,000 for five years, continuing on the same path. And you mentioned it last court about it'd be 175 a year, or for those five years, until that ends.
Well, you said 35,000 last time.
It's a one-time fee of 35. That is to do the migration, then it's 30 afterwards.
So that's the difference right now would be Net Data for five more years at 175,000?
That is correct. Versus ripping the Band-Aid off. But like I've stated previously, we've only been tossing this down the road for five years and it just keeps going up and up and up. So if we wanna delay it for another five years, then that's fine. I mean, that's why, I just, at this point, I just want a decision, really. Because it's the same spirited comments from the same department heads that wanna move to it and then they don't wanna move to it, it's not gonna change.
But there's no, other than the, the double entries, the, whatever time that is, the sheriff is having to do right now, I haven't heard any other...
I mean, that's the main gain is the time spent there. And sadly, I don't know, I mean, the sheriff's, the sheriff's offices, like half the...
Hey, Matt. You know, sorry to interrupt, but, you know, we, I think, our hope, we've saved a workshop, which we were gonna have, but it sounds like this one already turned into a workshop. And guess what? We'd be back here doing this again if we did a workshop. So maybe it's a good thing we're going through this. And you're the only one of the departments we haven't heard from. Would that help us to hear from the one guy? We've got everybody else on here. Would you wanna make any comments on this and we'll be done with a workshop?
Oh, okay, well.
One last thing, I forgot. Security. We have had no problems with security with Tyler at all. All of our documents are secure. Attorneys have the right to secure them when they file them in, or they cannot file them in. And if there's social securities, account numbers, minors' names, date of birth, those we secure ourselves. No problem with security.
Is that right for you? So, yes, I've, we've signed up, but we've almost got everybody.
Sure. But you're already, you're already on Tyler, aren't you?
No.
Oh.
No, we're on Net Data.
Oh, yeah, y'all need some, right?
Right. So I'm okay either way. I'm not gonna have a fit either way, so I'm easy. I mean, Net Data's the only thing I've ever used. There's a portion of our office that I don't even deal with that has a little bit of Tyler, I believe, for some financial purchasing stuff, but I don't even know how to do all that. The people who have done Tyler, we have two in our office who've done some Tyler and they're pro-Tyler people, you know, they want us to move to Tyler. But I guess I don't know what I'm missing, you know, with Tyler. I've just used Net Data and it's all I've ever known and that's it. I certainly would wanna be on the same thing as the county clerk. And one thing that I was sitting here wondering is, um, okay, so I guess, yeah, I mean, the district attorney, he's on Tyler, is that right? Cause, I mean, I wouldn't be able to imagine not being on the same thing as the county clerk, you know? Okay, cause, well, this is incorrect then. So I don't even know, I mean, I couldn't imagine being the district...
Who's the district attorney on, on, is on Tyler?
Yeah.
I thought they did both. I guess that is my error.
Well, anyway, I couldn't imagine not being on the same thing as the clerk that does the records for our court, you know, cause we obviously deal with the same defendants and stuff. So I would wanna copy whatever they're on, of course. I went to a workshop, it's probably been two and a half years ago with Tyler, and I don't remember a whole lot of it, but I mean, it sounded great and they talked about the double entry thing with the sheriff, but then it never went anywhere after that. But I'm, I mean, we're willing to learn. If y'all wanna switch to Tyler, you won't hear a complaint from me unless it fails, you know. But I mean, as far as the angst of, you know, of learning, I mean, we don't mind learning if it's better than great, so whatever.
Good, thank you, Matt. Kristin, you, you wanna say something and then Judge, when, and Judge, cause here, oh, okay.
I'm gonna speak for us, but, so one other thing that we thought about afterwards was, I know we're talking about the double entry just only for the sheriff's office, but it's also, so the e-filing system that Tona's office uses that's integrated with Tyler, Odyssey and her Navigator system, it will not integrate with Net D. I have reached out to them to try to, you know, hopefully, because that's something that the JPs in their conferences have been talking to moving towards is the e-filing system and where it's gonna be mandatory as of right now, it's not mandatory in the JP courts to e-file. But that is something that it is a possibility in the very near future and Net D does not integrate. They said that, the response back to me was, that's something that's in the works, but she could not give me an estimated of a year or two years or five years down the road of when that may happen. But, because that's something that would save our office, all JP offices, a lot of time where Martin's getting all of those cases that have to be manually put in and have to be scanned in and all of that, you know, eventually, if that comes to it, then it would all be sent to his system in Tyler, Odyssey, Navigator, whatever, automatically and would automatically create a case just like it does in Tona's office right now. So that is something that is to look towards the future that, that it's not just the sheriff's office that would be double entering, it is also our offices as well, that we're having to do that.
That's good to know, thanks.
Yeah. It, because I have reached out, because I have worked in both offices and know that that was so much easier in, in Tona's office was the e-filing system. And I know that it does in the county clerk's office integrate, Net D did integrate it to that, but the JP's offices do not, and they have no clue of when or if it might happen.
I don't think it's any question that every court is gonna be required by the state Supreme Court to go to e-filing. I think that's gonna happen. That is happening.
They're saying for the JPs within the, with probably less than five years.
Wow.
I have one thing Leanne just brought up, but, so like, whenever we had legislative updates and changes into the Net D system, they would not change our fees in their, you know, their way or what, like whatever was up to the local government code. We had to manually go in and change every single fee that, you know, had to be done and make sure that we had it right per, you know, auditor, per the treasurer, you know, and, and the distribution and all that. Net D wouldn't do that for us. We had to go and manually make sure that each office had done that, you know, JP's office had done that.
Tyler does it automatically then?
Yeah.
Well, they basically just said, no, we're not doing that.
Well, Tyler will though. Tyler does it for you.
Right. Tyler has always done that, you know, per, that my knowledge of it, and Net D would not do that for us. They said, no, you know, that's your job. I mean, if you had questions on, once you maybe messed it up, then they might help you fix it, but that was the biggest thing.
Leanne, let me ask something. If we, if you, if we went to Tyler, would you be able to do your time?
I'm already on. Well, actually.
So, yes, it would integrate, but we still have to pay, back to when we talked during Capitol, we would, it would still be a hundred thousand dollars upfront to swap over all the time clocks away from that third party we currently hold. But yes, it will integrate just fine and save man hours there as well.
Eventually, I will be coming to ask for that because time and attendance, even though Owen is working.
Oh, I know. It's been a, it's been a mess.
I'm through night and day trying to get my time and attendance and the in-code to integrate, and it's not in-code call, it's time and attendance, but eventually, it would be so much better if everything was like in-code.
Yes.
So we've got a...
So gentlemen.
We've got a five, you know, if you look at it over a five-year period, we're looking at $35,000 a year to stay, leave things where they are versus $305,000 a year to switch over, which some are saying is maybe inevitable. So the only, the last question I've got on this is, uh, is there, I mean, is there any way we can kind of do both? In other words, can we plan on a transition over time, but, I mean, does it have to be all or nothing, I guess is the question?
So if, so to that, when we spoke at the beginning of the year, of course, I went out for quotes on this. We could essentially break it up into two pieces. However, the cost is almost double of what you're seeing there, total project cost to break it up.
It's all or nothing.
It'd be a lot cheaper for the taxpayers to do all or nothing.
I know to be successful in business, efficiency is your main thing and, uh, your, your employees are usually your biggest expense, you know, and if you can make it efficient, you're gonna save money. That's just a given.
Well, it, like I said before, it's the value the court wants to do. Rip the Band-Aid off now or keep it on for another five years and we can all revisit the same thing. Of course, court members won't be here, you know, everyone changes, but it would be the same, same discussion, same, like it's been for the past five years.
Except it'd be more money.
That's correct. It's more, it'll be a lot more money. So the taxpayers don't benefit from it.
Here's something that could happen too. In the next two years away, things increase exponentially in the computer world and its e-filing system, especially now with COVID and stuff having, that's gonna restrict this personal movement. If the government came back, Supreme Court said that mandatory filing, e-filing for everything, then what are you gonna do?
I don't have the answer to that. I don't have the answer to that with our current setup.
That's something that could happen right here. Have y'all heard anything about that, you JPs out there about the e-filing system? Chad?
The e-filing system itself, like I said, is a separate system itself, but it's owned by Tyler, so there's other e-filing courts that you can go to, the system itself, courts, so it would be done on another system. Now, there's something that also they do have ability to integrate with that's come out in August, integrated e-filing also. So the other thing I forgot to mention is that Net Data has a GHS requirement, which is, say, look, streamline, you can send out, contact the election ones. Bill Tyler, I don't know what election that you could go after elections, which we are mandated to go after, so.
I know that's what they did with the attorneys. They just gave us a drop dead date and it varied by counties. They just came up and said, by this date, there will be no more in-person filing. It has to all be done by e-filing, period. Dallas County was first and then Collin County, Tarrant County, and it just went, and that's the only way you could file something. So it was no learning curve. It was either then or you couldn't do it. If that happens, what are we gonna do then? You're gonna be forced to make some change, right?
That's correct.
Where you think you have five years, you may not have five years. You probably have two years, if that, I'm thinking. What do you have on that?
Judge, on the e-file, you're absolutely correct. The Supreme Court did it on a delineated scale that made it by the county's population and when they were mandated to do it. And that happened, and what was great about Hood County is we had Tona and the county clerk's office, you know, pushing us as constables, we need to look at that. So we got on board the bandwagon real quick on e-file and the JPs were not mandatory. Then we had a referendum, or excuse me, not referendum, a member and them come down from the Court of Criminal Appeals on criminal cases are required now to be e-file with the courts. So even warrants and things like that are supposed to be e-file. You have the district attorney, you have the county attorney that have to give access to the attorneys, the court-appointed attorneys to log into the system that has passwords and codes to get in with timeframes when they have access to the files. All of this is getting more and more integrated. JPs, it's up and coming. Their limits, court limits have gone to 20,000 in their courts and, and we even have them pushing it more. This last legislative session, we had Tarrant County wanting to make the decision themselves that they can make it as high as they wanted to. They wanted to go to 50,000 and 100,000 just for Tarrant County. You had other counties like Harris County doing that also, but we also had our state association advocating for the JP, saying you don't need to put all that burden on them right now trying to relieve these other courts. E-file and technology, we're there and the question is, how much of it are we gonna be a part of? Are we gonna stay behind? E-file and Net Data's been talking about it for five years, but it's still not there. Net Data caters to JPs. They cater to, to, to them, also in the collections with GHS. You know, that's what they work towards. So we see how that works and JPs really like that because we've never known anything. When I started, we had no software for the constable in Hood County. In 1996, we had zero. And not until 2005, when Judge Watson used technology money to buy Net Data for constables. It is still for us a green screen and, and he can tell you, we're still using the AS400, you know, system, except they use what's called a GUI, Graphic User Interface. So we're still on that system. We still use that. But as technology comes up, where are we gonna be to where everything integrates? We're not spending money. How are we going to stay on top of it to where it benefits the taxpayers for time and money spent on employees plus software and other things? And that's the decision that y'all have to look at and make.
I make one more point.
Thank you.
Katie's office has helped. She has technology money that pays for Net Data, her technology money, and there, it's considerable sum in there that help pay for Tyler, if the office goes that way. And she's already doing one job of helping now pay for Net Data with that technology money and pay for Tyler too, so that takes the burden off the general run.
How much, what is that? What is we get, what is Katie getting for Net Data?
For her office, she's paying for her own Net Data software with her technology money.
Okay.
You know how much that is? One of them is 68,000, but by, within an hour or so leaving here, I've got everything on a spreadsheet and I will email all of you the cost for both.
I don't know what we need to do, Ms. Speaker.
Drew, let me ask something. The support system on Net Data compared to Tyler, are they equal? I mean...
I, I would think so. I mean, even if we have an issue from an IT standpoint, regardless if we call Tyler and/or Net Data, we have support instantaneously. And like Tona said, if it's something truly that they just can't get to for some reason or it's a bigger issue than what meets the eye, so to say, it's generally done the next day. Again, I think both companies are fine, but again, it, it just falls back to which person has dealt with which over the time.
It's just coming down to preference.
That's it. Yes, sir.
Are there any JPs like in Dallas or Houston, whatever court systems that require e-file? Anybody know?
Some of them are using e-file. It's not required yet, but they've begun e-file.
Chad said that criminal warrants work.
County does not, no Class Bs, Class Bs and above are...
Okay.
Well, gentlemen, what's our pleasure? I'm sorry you have to make the decision.
Judge, I'd like to know from the court, what more, anybody on the court, help me out, what more information do we need to make a decision? What, can anybody, can we identify that? What other information other than what we've heard?
I think we've all laid it out on the table.
You know, so... I got one question from the lady sitting over at the table. Of course, the auditor, main one, if, big if, and I'm not pushing either one, if we did go Tyler, would it make y'all's job a lot more streamlined, more easier?
Yes, sir.
Does it affect y'all's office any purchasing and treasure?
I want this time and attendance.
Yeah. Eventually, if we do get rid of time and attendance and move to the Tyler timekeeping system, then of course, then you start saving hours with her office doing...
Would it affect your office any, Nelda?
I don't think so. I think the purchasing module would stay the same.
What about HR? Would it, does it have any effect on y'all?
I don't think so. I have been told that there's a lot of capability out there that we were not entitled to when the first conversion was made, so I'd be very curious to see what else is out there for HR.
We, we have to operate our two systems when we give monthly reports.
That's what I, that's where I was going.
We, we still have to log in and run consummate or shady reports, um, Net Data and for county clerk, so we have to go back and forth. So yes, it's a little more time consuming for our office.
And everybody knows I'm not IT capability. I'm like Bruce. Every time I get a new cell phone, I'll go nuts trying to figure out how to work it. But after a while, I figured it out. And I'm not, I'm not computer savvy.
I just could see here, Faye's just looking at me smiling here, so that whatever decision we make, we're gonna make some people happy and some people gonna be mad about it. So it's no easy decision.
Sadly, that is true. And I'm the messenger, so I get killed either way. So it's, it's okay.
For me, it just comes down, what's best for the county and moving it forward.
That's what I'm looking at. That's what I'm looking at.
When will you get off the court? In four months. You could delay it until.
All right, question. Net Data's going to be here, I think, sometime this week, am I correct?
They are supposed to show up at my office randomly tomorrow. I say that because literally got an email like, hey, we're showing up. Okay, I didn't call them.
Know anything about that, Dean?
I just spoke, I just spoke with them this morning and on email, they stated to me that they were going to be here tomorrow and that they had called and spoke to Drew. And Drew told them there's going to be a workshop, that they knew nothing about what's going on today. The last, what they were told is there was going to be a workshop and they were going to be here tomorrow to visit with people. So, just like when I left, I wasn't here Friday. I took Friday off. And so when I went to work, or when I left work Thursday, last thing I knew was there was going to be a workshop. I didn't know anything about the agenda that was on here today that was put on there without letting, or without a lot of people knowing, until this morning. So.
But what more do we need to know?
What spreadsheet can you get us? Did you tell, did you say?
The one I remember, and I was trying to look it up on my phone, where we allocated all the, all the purchase orders from information technology and what was paid to Tyler and Net Data. What I saw is the yearly fees are about the same. That's what I'm remembering. So moving forward, that they were about the same right now. So there wouldn't be a huge difference.
It's just the upfront capital.
The upfront cost. That's what I'm remembering. And again, the big bonus here is the technology money that Katie's office has. It can only be used on certain things, software being one.
First software, not everybody else's software.
Well, that's what I'm saying. Proportion of Tyler or Odyssey, it could be paid for a lot of technology fund like Tyler Eagle, that came.
Right, and that's it.
She, she's currently pays for Eagle through Tyler.
So how much are you asking for, you know, if they, you know, we'd have to pay upfront for this?
I have it budgeted for this year, 2021.
At a million three?
No.
I've, I've budgeted 2.4 million to take care of anything that's coming up, to make sure that with the capital equipment that's needed, whatever you determine you decide to do, but that's the tentative plan right now that we'll talk about next week, is there's enough money in there in fund balance, moving into fund balance to take care of what you need for Tyler and other equipment.
But it's a million three for the Tyler?
It's a million five.
Million five?
Five.
But that's budgeted.
Well, or else a million.
Yeah.
Whether it's going to the cloud or they're going to do it locally.
And that's the discussion is if we do move to Tyler, what are we going to do? Do you want it here or do you want to move it to the cloud? I personally would keep it here.
Right.
But of course, like I said, that's, it's more money upfront, of course, because we're outright buying the licensing versus renting essentially the licensing. But as you can see on the sheet, your yearly expenses go down by 50,000.
Also, can the clerk respond? It's, it's not, you know, the auditor's decision to use or the IT's decision to use it. It's my decision and where I use those funds. So.
But are you required to use it for computer? Can you?
Yes.
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 It's not required. She can use it for computer.
And she has been, and that's been most appreciative in keeping the budget down.
Well, what can you use it for besides computer or computer software? Katie, do you know?
You run it for computer, computer software. It's, it's for, are we talking about records management or IT technology? That, that technology fund? We're talking about technology fund?
Yes.
Yeah, it's for any computer-related software or equipment.
Okay.
Sorry. You know I talk real fast when I get nervous. So, you know, that's why I talk fast.
That's what the game warden told me.
That's what the game warden told you?
That's what the game warden told me when he catch you out there.
He never caught you, Your Honor.
Okay. Well, look at the, look at the two new commissioners out there just smiling and saying, hey.
They dodged the bullet, I'm sure.
Y'all just go ahead and make this decision.
Because you have to make the decision.
I'm sure that y'all will go the other way. Do I, go ahead.
And Drew can correct me if I'm wrong. A couple of years ago, when this subject came up, they talked about Net Data hosting, the people who wanted to continue on Net Data. So Net Data was going to host the people who wanted to remain, and that's where we stood the last time this conversation came up. Isn't that correct? Or is that correct? I mean, am I, I did remember something like that, right?
I was going to say, that was to host it or keep it here again, and the court decided to host it. The problem is, we haven't done anything after a year and a half.
Right. I talked to them last week and they were waiting on you. Because I've got emails to the salesperson last week or the week before asking about it, and they stated they're just waiting on you to, to make a decision on what you want to do. But the Commissioners' Court agreed to host the Net Data software offsite with, with Net Data. And I think that if you were leaning towards going to Tyler, you know, there's another, there's another way of making everybody happy. Whatever we go to, the judicial people, the financial people, it has no effect on. If, if they're saying that they, once a month they, they run a report, well, we run hundreds of reports every day, you know. So they still have to log in. They still have to do the same thing. So, I mean, my plea to you gentlemen is, is let the people who do the work keep the software that they want to keep at a much smaller cost to the county.
In my head, there was a pause.
Is that a question or is that a statement? That it will be cheaper to stay where we're at? Drew?
From a capital upfront prod, cost, absolutely.
Bottom line of the county?
Absolutely. But again, it's the think bigger than five years and all the efficiencies saved, man hours saved, doing all the double entry and all the integration. That's the thing. So it's really an all or nothing. Either we do it or we don't. And that's where it's back to coming with a decision.
That goes back to this, what I asked, going to another county or city using their cloud. Like I say, I'm not a computer person. Is it going to be a security issue?
I mean, I've asked Net Data about it and they said everything should be secured.
Okay.
Let me ask you, have you got any indication that if, let's say the state mandates that all Class C, Mr. Miners, be e-filed and all JP has to do e-file? Does Net Data have a system in place, you think, that they're going to be able to e-file?
Not to my knowledge. I don't know what we would do. Because if that came down to the department heads responsible for that, then I know they would be looking at me going, hey, we need a solution for this. And I wouldn't have an answer. I'd have to look into it. But it sounds like that's been the answer for the past five years from what Chad was saying.
Well, that's coming. It just, it's coming.
When Net Data's, or Net Data, Tyler already has a solution.
It's just that cost is what I don't.
I want to come to court, send the state, said, y'all are doing it.
Yep.
E-filing. That's what, five years ago, six, maybe?
Yeah, there is an e-filing coordinator in Hood County here. Do you want me to come up and talk?
I did hear that. At one point, I was the e-filing coordinator for the district clerk's office and, and the county clerk's office. So I know a little bit about e-filing. The, it was like eight years ago that it was mandated. It was civil and probate that was started out. We were the fourth county in the state of Texas on e-filing because there was an e-filing system prior to Tyler and they just didn't want to do it anymore. So that's when Tyler won the bid and created the software. And so since the other one went away, they, they didn't do it on a population basis. They did it on a county basis who already was e-filing. They got those counties first and after they were taking care of which we were one of, then they went. At the beginning, Net Data didn't sync up with Tyler at the beginning, okay? Because, you know, the Tyler system changes constantly. I'm, I'm only talking about e-filing, not anything else. It constantly changes with bugs and stuff like that. All software has them. And so Net Data, they wanted to sync up so they can have it integrated, which they now do, and that's what allowed us, or Katie's office to go paperless. It didn't happen overnight. It did take some time. It took three, maybe four years because they couldn't get the record layouts from Tyler or they were changing. I'm not blaming Tyler. I'm not blaming Net Data. I'm just saying the software changed. So if you're wanting to sync up, but one side's constantly tweaking, you know, it's hard to sync up. I don't know anything about the JP software. I've been telling the JP's they should be e-filing for many, many, many years. They just never wanted to do it. So I'm surprised that today it's a big deal. I have no doubts that Net Data or any other software vendor like EDOC Tech or whatever, that if JP's were mandatory, they would go to try to link up the system. Actually, Net Data and I think EDOC Tech, I'm not sure the specifics, but they actually had to file suit, I think, I might be wrong, against Tyler to allow them to link up because they weren't allowing it. But that's just like any other software company's going to do the same thing. But.
Yes, gentlemen, some of this question was asked. Who's all on Tyler right now? And you said all around the North Dallas, Fort Worth type area. Is Erath, Johnson, Parker, Somerville, Palapinto?
Yes, they're all on Tyler.
All on Tyler?
Yes. I was going to say, Erath, I know Erath just signed.
Who?
At the end of July.
Erath has both Tyler customers and Net Data customers. Somerville is Net Data, Comanche is Net Data, Young County is Net Data, Palapinto's Net Data, Wise is Net Data and Jack is Net Data.
Okay, I'm just talking about the ones that surround in us.
I thought those are our counties that surround in us.
Well, you said, is Johnson County?
Tyler.
Tyler. Parker?
I don't know about Parker.
Do you know?
Yeah.
Should be Tyler.
Not Net Data. Tyler.
Who did she say? Is that? Tyler, Parker's on Tyler. And you said Somerville is on?
Net Data.
Net Data? And Erath, you said just went on to Tyler?
Correct. They just signed at the end of July. So they're still on Net Data, but they're about.
But they signed up for Tyler.
The entire county?
Tarrant? From my understanding.
For, from your understanding?
Yes.
So we're not for sure?
Yeah, from my understanding.
We're not for sure.
But they just switched to go vote it and paying the cost, okay? And Dallas and Fort Worth are on Tyler.
That is correct.
I don't, I thought they, they have their own software. They, their IT department has like hundreds of people and I thought they wrote their own software.
I was going to say, I know Mr. Eagle said he called their.
Do you know, Tona, if this?
Dallas, okay.
I don't know about Dallas County.
So Dallas is on the news quite a bit for writing their software.
The JP's and they switched to Odyssey. Tarrant County has a programmer that writes stuff I know on the constable side, the judges and the courts and stuff, I don't know, but they have programmers that write their software in Tarrant County.
I don't know Collin County.
Is your mic on? I'm sorry. We're, we're, I just, I meant to say something about that before, sorry.
Collin County years ago has been on Odyssey well before I came here, but that was county clerk.
Their whole county is now.
Kind of late, but.
Little.
That's farther than some of mine.
So here's another, and here's another dilemma we've got, is that these are other elected officials. That it's like we're not telling the sheriff exactly what car he ought to drive and what guns he ought to shoot. And so it is, it is quite a dilemma. And if the, and I hate to like even consider kicking it one more week, but hear me out. I'm hearing enough conflict here that we got Net Data guys coming in tomorrow. I'd like to see them and, you know, schedule me in for a third, you know, to talk to them. I'd like to see Becky's spreadsheets. I'd like to see the statutes you offered us about the independence of each elected official's office. And then get a good count on the other counties surrounding us and the, I mean, I did call Dallas County a few weeks back and their entire system is on Tyler, all of it. And I didn't hear any negative, negative things and that's about it. They just all went to that. And so, but I hate to make a hasty decision. I know we've been kicking it around, but I swear, I thought we talked about having a workshop, which we're having right. This, as far as I'm concerned, this is our workshop.
No kidding.
But maybe give us, plant, put this on the agenda for next Monday, Tuesday, because we're going to meet anyway for the, it's a special Commissioners' Court anyway, and we can vote yes or no on this deal and give everybody in the county a time to come talk to us and tell us, convince us one way or the other. And maybe, and that's my thinking right now. Yes, ma'am. Come to the, please come to the mic.
I just wanted to say that if you're going to have Net Data come in and talk to you, then you need to have Tyler come in and talk to you also.
I'll be at the same time, wouldn't you?
Yes, absolutely.
You bet.
That would probably.
Fair enough.
I don't think they're going to tell you anything more than what we've already told you as users. I, I mean, I'm sure you don't want to see it.
I want a commitment out of him that the sheriff is not going to lose any of his information and.
I can guarantee that for you right now, Judge.
Yeah.
What, what are you going to put up as collateral for your indemnity in case you're wrong? It's like playing poker with me and our big stakes poker. If you lose, you have nothing to lose. You can't win. But.
I guess.
I, I think that that may be a good idea. I'm kind of for that. That's, let's see if we can get, since Net Data's sending somebody up here, see if you can get Tyler to come up here. Let's put it on.
And Drew, can you bring us all the financial?
I know.
Plans and stuff that, you know, what it would be, what you save in the next five years or, you know.
I'd have to meet with every department and department head and sit down and go into that detail, along with the other stuff that I'm dealing with as far as all these open record requests. There's no way I'd be able to do that.
Well, just bring me, or bring the court as much information as you can.
Okay.
Probably get hold of the Tyler and tell them what we're doing and see if the Cincinnati is coming up here and see. We, we can't have a workshop. We can't get together, but I'd like to talk to them myself after, that Dave talks to them and Bruce. Can't talk together, but.
What date are we shooting for here to?
She said the 15th.
Okay.
I hear a motion to pull it off until next, what is it, 15?
So wait, the workshop is, so you want the Tyler rep down here for next court? Is that what I understand?
No, no. I thought somebody said Net Data was coming down here tomorrow, the representative was. Is he?
I got an email. They were just going to randomly show up, like I said.
They are going to show up?
Randomly, yes. They didn't give a time. They just said they're coming down to Hood County and they wanted to speak with me.
Well, call them up and tell them what we're going to do. If I were them, I think I would rather come down at a time. Come down in the morning at nine o'clock, get various people want to talk to them. The same thing with Tyler. If they want to sell their product on the deal, they need to be up here and tell us the advantages, the pros and cons about everything. Let them bid against each other. Tell them what they can do versus the other one. And then we've got to make a decision the next time.
Can we do that without a public workshop? I mean, if they're going to, who are they going to talk to? Just you or?
They'll talk to all of us individually.
Individually.
We're not ask, we're not making a decision. We're just listening to them.
I just want more information. I'd like for them to just answer some questions about it, verify what we're saying here. This is such a, this, you know, it really is. I see my good friends out there that want to stay with Net Data and I'm, and I see my good friends that says, hey, it's going to be so much easier and everybody's willing to help to get on Tyler. And then I see Tyler saying that.
Why don't we just go the same route we're going with then?
You know, that we may have to, it looks like things are going to happen where we're going to have to get more computer savvy here. So, I don't know.
Judge.
This decision, you know, it's, it's such a big decision. You're talking about a lot of money. You're talking, you're messing with a lot of departments and this court needs to have peace of mind in what decision they make. So the more information, the more is better.
Judge, I'd like to make a motion, table this to another date.
He was made a motion to table the Tyler versus Net Data to, how about September 5? 15th? Can we do that? Is that right? Commissioner Dever to vote? Okay.
I'll second that.
Second by Commissioner Eagle. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed? Motion carries five zero to carry till the 15th.